At this time, I'd like to call the January the 3rd, 2022, brand-new-year. Meeting to order. And at this time, we'll have the invocation by Vice Chair Langley, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Walker. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eterno God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for the opportunity to come into a new year to do the business of your people. Father, we just ask for divine inspiration that our choices will be good and pleasing in thy sight, that we will do what's best for your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you have your cellphone with you, make sure you turn it completely off, or at least in the silent mode. Item number, I'm sorry, item number C is conflict of interest. Does any commissioner have a conflict with any of the agenda items tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to item number D, the approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add a couple of items to the agenda. One of those is a vote on the filming of the budget planning session that happens later this month, and I'd also like to add having a report on the status of repairs in the
Our policy is such that if we decide to add, it's going to be the wishes of the commissioners. We'll take a vote on the first one. Do I have a motion to add?
Some of the second.
What was that one again?
The question to vote on whether or not.
The first one, just the first one.
To vote on whether or not we will be filming the budget planning session that happens later this month.
Okay. Commissioner Redboughs.
Are we going to be doing that here?
Any other comments?
Yeah, I've commented. We're going to, uh, this manager, we're going to meet here for the budget, but we got all the equipment. It would be easy.
He just said that.
Hey, just, that was just.
Excellent. Well, good.
That was a form of question.
Anyone else? All those in favor of recording the budget, raise your right hand. Okay. All those opposed? Thank you. All right, now you want to do your second one?
Well, I would like for the engineers here, I would like to report on the status of jail repairs, because I saw swarmed over by Montgomery Solutions this past month, and I understand.
Let me turn this thing on. Let me start over. The county engineer is here. I saw swarmed over this past week or so by Montgomery Solutions, and I understand, it may not be true, but I understand that the jail administrator has either resigned or been fired. So I'd like some clarification on these items, and tonight is the night to get this clarified.
Okay. You want to make that a motion?
That, yes, that is a motion, that she report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. All right. We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, and we've had the two additions. All those in favor of the revised agenda, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to the public comments, and the first one is Billy. Remind everyone you have three minutes, and I'll be keeping time.
Okay. Want to go up there?
Yes, please, please.
I just celebrated 40 years in Sydney Fire Department in 2021, and I've seen a lot of dangerous things happen. What I'm shooting for is a 45 zone through Sydney, both ways. I figured on a mile and a half by the fire department, and I figured on six tenths of a mile on Sydney Road and eight tenths north and south on 99. And I talked to Mr. Hamilton in Greenville, and he told me to get all the names I could, and I got 49 signatures right here. And I have one of these that a friend of mine was doing it for me, and he had had a shoulder operation, and then I saw him Friday, and he said, "Well, I'm going to try to do it for you this weekend," but this weekend didn't happen like it was supposed to. So I noticed five on that one, so that's 55 signatures I already got. I've seen a lot of bad things happen right there to Sydney, on the kind of people, looking at the telephone when they're coming from the stop sign, and just different things that's happening. And I feel like that if we could get the 45 zone there, I done talked to the Highway Patrol, invited, they say we'll back it thoroughly. But I live in front of Sydney Fire Department, and some of these souped-up trucks they got from Pamlico Beach comes by there, they go slow till they get by the fire department, they see the mannequin standing there, didn't foreboard them. And you, so bad you can't even talk, it's so loud. Sometimes they do that when we're meeting at fire department, right in front of the fire department. We got 14 businesses right there in that area within a mile radius. Got the fire department, then we got two churches right there on Sydney Road, and everybody that I've talked to so far is in favor of getting this done so we can slow them people down.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask one simple question, if I could. Yes, sir. Is your major complaint about the speed limit or the noise?
Well, my wife come out, we live in front of the fire department, she come out the road and turned toward Sydney, and looked, there's a truck coming around the road, right down in the middle of the road, a small dump truck loaded with dirt, and he was reaching in the floor to get his telephone, and he rolled that truck over right, and I felt, truck and I fell in the graveyard. And she stopped, helped him get out, and called a rescue there, but it could have been entirely different if she had been a little closer. And my granddaughter, two years ago, come through Sydney, coming from Belle Haden, and she got hit on the right-hand side of her car, and it totaled her car. If it had been on the left-hand side, it would have killed her. So we got more, a whole lot more than that. Last month, we had two or three different wrecks on Sydney Road, especially with all this traffic going through there now like it's going around. My job at the fire department, now I'm a safety officer, I still put the trucks out there and pump the trucks for the guys, but I don't pump the hose no more, I just turn the truck on and run the truck for them. And so Bill made me safety officer of it, on the kind of, I felt like I didn't need to be out there no more. But we've seen a lot of good things, and we've seen a lot of bad ones.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy. Next is Mayor Williams and Kurt Ryan from Aurora. Now, are you asking for six minutes or three minutes?
Well, I'll accept whatever you give me, but if you have a little bit longer.
I'll give each one of you three minutes. How about that?
Well, that would be wonderful if you do that, and I'll try to shorten mine up, because he's, Kurt's the one that's got most to talk about. As y'all know, Aurora's trying to do a lot of things. We got a lot of irons in the fire, a lot of great things that we think are going to happen to Aurora, and partly because of what this board has agreed to do to help us, and we thank you for this. We're forming the Aurora leadership, we have formed the Aurora Leadership Council, we've got different committees, and we're taking an overall view of the things that we need to do to grow our town, to make it look better, and the whole community, Richland Township included. Major General Kurt Ryan has really been an asset to our entire community, and I can't thank him enough for moving, choosing Aurora as his home. Because he's, between the two of us, we've come up with some ideas, and Kurt helps me get these things enacted, and the work is real cheap, so you can't pay it for anything. But what an asset. We've got a strategic plan we're working on. We know where we want to go in the future, and since I don't have the three minutes, I don't have, I can't tell you about everything, but I have sent you a letter and to bring up some things that we are trying to do. So having said that, Kurt's got something we specifically wanted to bring to task tonight, and if you'll indulge him, your attention, I would appreciate it. Major General Kurt Ryan.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners and public officials here tonight, first, I extend a happy new year. It's going to be a great year, 2022. Thank you for the opportunity to give public comment tonight. As the mayor said, my name is Kurt Ryan, and I'm volunteering my time to represent the town of Aurora and the citizens of Richland County, of which I am one. Mayor Williams, as he said, signed out a letter to county leadership prior to the new year. My hope is that each of you have received a copy of that letter. It's really our request, and it referenced the need for broadband or high-speed internet extended to the citizens of the south side of the Pamlico River. His letter requests your support with assistance from the state of North Carolina to earmark funding to prioritize and expedite delivery of high-speed internet services to our people. Now, as a former soldier, serving nearly 34 years in the United States Army, I really value the importance of this thing called lines of communication. These lines no longer exclusively include just roads and waterways, of which telegraph lines used to run, but also now are obsolete telephone lines, are inadequate and disproportionate delivery of cable, cell, and satellite services to our citizens. Now more than ever, we need the flow of affordable and reliable information to all. Broadband serves as our 21st century educational, healthcare, and economic development line of communication. More and more business is being conducted via e-commerce. How and where our employees' work is radically changing, many no longer traveling to a physical place to work, but working virtually, often from home, to include myself. Education and healthcare will become more and more dependent on access to modern networks, these improved lines of communication in the 21st century. Recently, I went to my first VA appointment in Greenville, and ironically, they said they had no ability to provide me service at the VA clinic, and did I want to have telemedicine in lieu of a physical provider? And quite frankly, I laughed, because I can't access the network from where I live in this relatively remote place on the south side of the county. Because of these realities, we request this enabling capability be a top priority by the county and by the state for funding. We've identified this as a key task in our strategic plan, of which we look forward to sharing more in the near future. And lastly, I'll close with a standing invitation by our mayor for the entire county commissioners to come to Aurora, to Richland Township, to spend some time with us, maybe in the April timeframe. Chairman Waters, where we can then lay out the details of our more, of our complete strategic plan. We should have something done by then. I offer an opportunity for any questions.
We, as I mentioned to you before the meeting, if you set up date after April the 15th, then as many of the commissioners as possible go down there to see the presentation or hear it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, happy new year.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
I too want to wish everybody a happy new year, but I wish I was coming to you with something nicer. I do want to note that not everybody in the county is having trouble with the police department and things, so I just want to keep it on the front, so it can be addressed, hopefully sooner than later. I want to thank God for Mr. Gray's courage to stand up for his daughter and to share his exhausting effort to get an investigation from law enforcement for all of us. That investigation has not happened yet. We need strong solidarity against this drug and prostitution ring Mr. Gray has been forced to experience, as well as our own neighborhood drug experience on Remington Lane. This brings me to realize in Beaufort County, there is some people above the law. Being good men is not enough as leaders. My parents would say, "Good men with no action make them guilty by association." It is the vacuum created by inactivity and righteousness that sucks wickedness into our lives. The commissioners pray to God for his will and leadership, but what we are getting is a vote for immorality. I see my need for corrections and pass voting, and I hope this gives the commissioner a chance to show their own humility and courage to correct their vote on Mr. Gray's investigation. Leaders that do nothing give permission for bad actions and teach people the wrong way to act. I expect better from my leaders. I did vote for Mr. Kidwell, although for some reason I overlooked sending him my documentation, but I did send it higher up. If Mr. Kidwell doesn't think we need more unpolitical police help, that will be a correction I will make in the future. Something cynical is happening here, and commissioners not wanting to have an investigation, which is supposed to get to the truth, points out the corruption and how much they want it covered up, and how likely it involves people of power and prestige. My letter to Seth Edwards asked for an FBI investigation, so what is the magic number of complaints that need to come forward to stop the leaders from hindering the needed work of the people? We need good men and women that are willing to act, to run for office and replace men that refuse to act, and to anyone who has had trouble with the sheriff's office to start coming to commissioners and police committee meetings to voice their grievances. It is now or never for the help Beaufort County has long needed, and show your support behind Mr. Gray or any woman that has been raped and/or victimized by drugs. We, the people, shouldn't be willing to idle stand by for the incompetence and wickedness Beaufort County residents is being forced to live in.
Thank you.
Hello, happy new year. I'm Dawn Brenson-Slan, a resident of Beaufort County and a small business owner, and I'm coming tonight basically to ask about some information that I would like to see or understand if we can receive, and how would that be done? Is that done as a part of a report, or is that something that can be sent out? And that's around the information that our health department provides around complying with CDC guidelines and regulations. If everyone was paying attention, the PCR test that was used on December 31st to determine if people were COVID positive was not supposed to be used on January 1st to determine if that same patient was positive. So were those patients retested, or did that, did those people go on as if they had COVID? Do they not know is it flu? What will be going, used going forward? I also know that FDA website posts a number of tests that are, again, under emergency use authorization, because there's nothing approved yet, and how do we ensure that our health department keeps up with those changes? Some of the other things, as far as like the quarantine time, that changed, how are we managing that? How is that being handled? How is that rolling out to the schools and to all the other agencies that are covered under the remit of the county commissioners? And how does our health department comply with federal government regulations, and are they reimbursed for the tests and the COVID cases that are highlighted here in Beaufort County? Those are all questions, and maybe that information exists somewhere, I'm not aware of where that would be, but it would be nice to have that information as a citizen. Also, whenever the information is provided, I understand it comes from the state virologist, but if we could get some links to that data and where the source of that data is pulled together, that would be helpful as well. Finally, one more thing, the vaccine injuries. The VAERS database has about 10% of the reports. I know there's a number of injuries, and I'm interested to know if there's many injuries reported in Beaufort County for the vaccine. I would find it hard to believe that the number that have been listed across the nation, that Beaufort County would be excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the legislative updates for elected officials, and I see neither one. So we're down to items for consent. I will entertain a motion to approve items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Add a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Item number H, items for discussion and decision.
Happy new year, everyone. So we're on day 650.
Sorry about that.
Is my time up?
No, I'm sorry about that. This thing locks that, and I can't touch it, so.
Oh, yes.
If it goes off again, I'll throw it at you.
I'll be on my toes then. It's day 650 for the COVID response in Beaufort County. It's not advancing. So this is a graph showing you the state's numbers as of today, where they have 1.69 million cases that are positive. You can see there's a large number that was shown a few days ago, and all indications are of a increasing number of cases in the state. Y'all probably heard of that already over the last couple of weeks. And in Beaufort County, we're also seeing the same number. You can see we have a big increase that has occurred since the middle of December. And in most cases, this is probably due to holiday gatherings and the Omicron virus making its way into Beaufort County. So right now, we have had 8,211 cases, that means, and as of today, we are at 37.9 as a seven-day average. Usually, five per day was what the low point was, where we were, I think, a month ago when we were here, and now we're up to almost 40 per day. And I expect that number probably will go up more as the next month or so goes through, and I'll see, we'll probably see another spike coming, and hopefully be gone in about a month. I did add another data point in here, you can see the positive cases. I summed up June 1st to December 31st as our delta wave. That kind of shows the delta wave coming through, and you can see the breakthrough cases were about at 16, so for every 100 cases, about 16 of them would have been vaccinated. And that correlates closely with the state numbers, which I'm going to show you in a little bit as well. Since June 1st, though, I'm going to start keeping that number on there. So since June 1st, we've had 100 cases, and 21 of those have been breakthrough. I expect to see a higher breakthrough case rate with Omicron, because the virus is able to kind of bypass the vaccine, especially with people that have high-waned rates, or lower, lower potential immunity against the virus when it comes through. So you'll be able to follow that data there. This is how we compare, then compared to the rest of the state. So the central part of the state has been hit hardest right now, the bigger populations, and then it's spreading out now towards us.
Did you say that the new vaccination, the booster is not working well?
No, I didn't say that.
For some people with Omicron?
No, I said that, what I'm saying was that this virus can bypass vaccination easier than Delta can.
Okay.
But it still provides, the vaccine still provides.
It's more resistant for some people. Okay, got it.
Just like with Delta, some people can still catch the virus. I expect more people that have been vaccinated will catch COVID.
Are you seeing, or you're receiving data, that's making you believe that folks that have been vaccinated have a, and have a high morbidity rate, are still doing better because of the vaccination?
Right, that's why I'm going to show later, is that even if you do catch it, if you've been vaccinated, the seriousness of it is much less. So this just goes to show the deaths by month, so you can see the increase that we just went through. I only have three, or two others that I'm investigating at this point, and both of those would be in December if they come out to be positive for COVID, once I get their death certificates and look at it. So these show the North Carolina cases based on vaccine status, which gets to your question, Stan, about the seriousness of it. So you can see that the columns show the number of cases that were reported during that week, and then how many of them were vaccinated, and how many were not vaccinated. So you see a big difference in whether you can actually have COVID as a case that's identified versus with your vaccine status. The blue represents people that are unvaccinated, and the gray are the people that have been vaccinated. So this is good indication of the effectiveness of the vaccine and the way it works, and how it stays off the virus. And this is more of the seriousness of it. You can see that in North Carolina, of all the people that have been vaccinated, 83% were unvaccinated, and 15 or 16.9% were, did I say that right? 16.9% were vaccinated. So again, that's just showing that what you were saying earlier, that it does help with the seriousness of it. And then when you look at ICU numbers, this even greater effect that you see, 88.6% were unvaccinated, 11.4% were vaccinated. So looking at the Omicron variant, this graph shows the isolations that were shown, and you can see in red, those were the Delta variant, so you see when Delta first came out, what, in June, and then how it spread through the North Carolina area, and then you can see that the red became exclusive, or almost exclusive, and then towards the end of that graph, you can see where Omicron is starting to show, there's a few cases that are in there. And so it's starting to show a lot more. This shows just the VIT area, so this includes our hospital area, as well as mostly in the northeast North Carolina area. The light blue is Delta, and then you can see the Omicron has made its appearance on the last three columns. You can only see it in two of those columns, because the third one over is much, is very small. So three weeks, three weeks before this graph was shown, it was less than 1%, was Omicron. Then two weeks, it was 6%, and now it's at 20%. Now, this graph is about two weeks old, because of how long it takes to type the virus. At this point, I think it's going to be half or 75% when they finally come back with all the results. So about 50% of right now are probably Omicron. Just some additional information to talk about with COVID, so there are some treatment options that are becoming available, or have been out there and more readily used, and most of y'all have heard of the monoclonal antibodies. Y'all have asked me about that in the past, and I showed y'all some graphs about how antibodies work and stuff like that. So that treatment's available. The problem is, is that it is not as effective against Omicron as it was against Delta. But as they start to find, get more cases of Omicron, they can start making more antibodies that kind of cater towards Omicron, and that will be out in a, you know, more effective when it finally gets to the point where there's a lot out there. Then the dexamethasone, which is a steroid, is still the one that's most commonly used for somebody that's in hospital on a ventilator, or somebody that has a serious case, and that's a steroid, which, the whole way a steroid works is it cuts back on inflammation, and that's really what's causing the problem with the COVID virus when you get sick, it's really a lot of the inflammation that's occurring in there. So that's still a treatment option that's being used. The last two are new medications that have been authorized, and authorized doesn't mean it's been approved, it means it's emergency use authorized by the FDA, and that's the Pax Lvid, which is made by Pfizer, and is for mild to moderate COVID in anyone 12 and older. And usually, it's reserved for people that are at risk for serious illness, so they don't just, they typically, they don't typically just hand it out to everybody. It is a prescription, though, so your provider will have to do the prescription. And in order to qualify, you should be positive, so you have to have a positive test, and then within five days of symptoms onset. And what it does is it goes in and attacks the virus and keeps the load down so that your illness is not as severe, very similar to Tamiflu is for the flu virus. However, it's not, it's not recommended now for prevention of an infection, it's not for serious illness, and it's not for pre-exposure, like if you were exposed to COVID, before you actually catch COVID, they don't recommend you get it. The monopiravir is also, is made by Merck. It has also been approved by the FDA, or authorized by the FDA for the same thing, except for it's 18 years and older. It is also by prescription, and the same It is also by prescription and the same requirements are the test positive for COVID and then to be within five days of the onset of your symptoms. So the new guidelines that have come out as far as isolation and quarantine. Just a reminder that isolation means you actually have the disease or you've been positive for COVID. Quarantine means you've been exposed to somebody and you're hopefully not gonna get it, but we're keeping you separated in order to see if you developed the disease. So for isolation, and this is for the general population, uh, there's different, uh, different criteria or guidelines for healthcare workers and congregate living. Healthcare workers, where you see five days, generally you'll see seven days. And there's a couple of other requirements. And they're still waiting for some guidance on congregate living such as long-term care facilities, jail, prison, and those places. So as far as isolation, if you are positive, then you're going now to five days of isolation from that. And that's if you're asymptomatic. So if you're positive, it wants you to stay out of the community for five days on your own. And then after that, wear the mask for five days. If you're symptomatic, you need to stay out for, uh, you know, at least five days and then until your symptoms go away. So, uh, so if you get, feel better at day seven, then after 24 hours, you should be able to go in, back out to the, uh, to the community and wear the mask for five more days. Okay? So now if you've been exposed to somebody where it used to keep you out for 14 days, uh, now it's gonna be, you're gonna be kept out for five days if you are unvaccinated or you're not up to date on your boosters. So you'll be quarantined for those five days. There's a five-day quarantine. If it's not, if it's not feasible for you to be quarantined, then they want you to wear the mask for the full 10 days that you're out there. At any time, if you were to get sick, you wanna immediately get away from the public and, and test to see. If you are up to date on your vaccinations, there's no reason to be quarantined. For all cases of exposure, it's recommended that after five days after that exposure, that you go ahead and get tested to see if you have, if you're maybe an asymptomatic positive case. This is just a flu picture because, you know, I know a lot of people look at, wanna know, make sure, see what the flu is doing as well. So you can see we have had an increase recently, um, but it's been pretty stable. But January and February is really the flu season. Yeah, so I do expect these numbers to start increasing quite a bit. As far as testing goes, the last couple of weeks, you know, with all the holidays and stuff like that, it hasn't been as much testing. It's kind of stayed stable, uh, testing numbers. So right at about 600 per week is what we're seeing. However, uh, today, our line was long. So everybody's coming back from the holidays and stuff like that. So the line was very long today. So I did expect that number to probably shoot up to into the thousand for this week. My expectations anyway. The percent positivity is right around 10%. And that means that one out of every 10 tests is basically positive. I expect that number to go up probably to about 15 or 16.
Speaking of testing, do you, do you see having any shortages of test kits?
No, we have not heard of any shortages of test kits here in Beaufort County. Now, I don't know if there's, there may be shortages of at-home test kits, but we don't monitor at-home test kits, so I'm not sure. As I mentioned, we had a long line at the Health Department this morning. And I asked somebody to check on the other site, which was out there on the Hackney Avenue. And they only had two cars. So we went out to the line and told people to go to Hackney site. But we wanna get the word out there that Hackney site is the same company that's doing it. And they're actually open till 5 o'clock every evening. So let's get the word out there that that's a good place to go get tested as well. So we can use, you know, make people's weight a little bit lower by, instead of waiting for an hour at the Health Department long line, we can get there and maybe get that time and a half or something like that. And we are mostly, we're open on days that, uh, the office is open. So during the holidays, there was a few days where we were closed and we heard about that. We're sorry about that, but, um, we're trying to accommodate as best we can. We don't have another holiday for a while, so we should be open most of our workdays. Vaccinations, we're probably seeing about 70 people start the vaccination each day, or each week, I'm sorry, at this point. So you can see the, the numbers and where they're, how many we're doing. Yeah, we're, we're down to about 70 per day that we're starting. Now those are, I'm talking about first-time vaccinators. This graph shows first time and the second doses. So it's probably looking at about 150, 200 a week that we're doing. It is. We'll probably see about 10% of people don't come back and get their second dose.
You meant 70 per week, right?
What did I say?
70 per day.
I did mean, I meant 70 per week, I'm sorry. My lips go much faster than my brain, you know? Should be the other way around. So looking at the numbers of vaccinations, we're at, what, 52% of our population is vaccinated, almost 53%. And 63% of our adult population is, is vaccinated. 25% of those 12 to 17 have been vaccinated. Four and a half percent of 5 to 11-year-olds have fully vaccinated. So, um, I showed you those numbers, uh, how effective the vaccine is, is and how it's very protective, especially against seriousness. So I mean, I strongly recommend the vaccine. Y'all have probably heard me say that and I, I guess I'd be wrong not to say that every time I'm in front of the camera or something like that, how effective the vaccine is. And, um, you know, I, I've got the booster shot myself and my mom, I made her take the booster shot. So she's 80 years old and dear to me, so I wanted her protected against this. We do recommend.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
In reference to the vaccines, and I've had my booster as well. But in reference to the question we heard earlier from the public, are there any injuries, vaccination injuries here in Beaufort County?
Now, we do not receive direct responses on adverse effects. I'll get somebody that comes up and says, "I had this knot on my arm for a couple of weeks" or something like that. But I don't, I don't get anybody, I have not received any calls from people that have said that I've had any serious responses. Most people say they had, um, a, you know, feel like they had a cold or something the day after they got it. But I haven't had anybody that's been hospitalized for vaccinations. Nobody's called and talked to me about it or anybody in the Health Department that I know of.
Are you, are you hearing folks complaining about their reaction to the booster?
Same as the first and second dose.
First and second.
Yeah, I responded, I, I reacted pretty strongly against the second dose.
I did too.
I felt pretty bad for half the day, you know, the next day. But I didn't have any problems with the booster.
We didn't either.
Yeah. So as far as vaccine availability, we do have, the Health Department provide the vaccines on Mondays. If you wanna start the vaccine or if you need it because of your immunocompromised, we can give you your additional dose there. On, on Tuesdays, we do the second doses. And then on Wednesdays and Thursdays, right now, we're doing the boosters. I don't have booster numbers yet. The state apparently does not have a way of distinguishing between the additional dose and the booster dose. So at this point, I don't know, uh, how many boosters have been done. I know that, you know, we've done, uh, doing, uh, like two, a little over 2,800 boosters at the Health Department, but I don't know how many's been done at other, other sites or anything like that. And then the flu vaccine is still available, but we're no longer doing it through the drive-through. We are now just call the Health Department and say, "You need the flu shot." And we'll, uh, make an appointment for you to receive that. So any questions?
Uh, Commissioner Redbough.
It looks like that the flu is almost rivaling COVID in terms of numbers.
Uh, no, I, I don't think it was quite that high. It may look like it, but those numbers are lower if I'm not mistaken.
14? It looks like the total flu cases per week are up over 200?
Okay, that's for the state.
Oh, that's the state?
That's the state, I'm sorry.
You don't have local?
No, I don't have local. I think there's, uh, I do have, but I didn't bring it, so I don't know exactly. I can get it for you though.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm not even sure I could break it down by Beaufort. I think it might only be VIT numbers, but that'd be regional. Because it's not a required, uh, reporting, uh, disease. That's why I don't know exactly.
Jim, if, if you have COVID, like last week, you've already had the first two shots and you're waiting to get the booster. Is there a recommended time? Three months, six months?
To receive the booster after you've had COVID?
Yes.
No, it's fine to take it as soon as you're recovered from all the, the symptoms.
Okay. Any, any other questions? All right, you wanna move into your next item?
Okay, so a couple of months ago, I talked to y'all about the communicable disease expansion plan that we had. Y'all voted for Phase 1, so now I'm here to ask for y'all to vote, uh, approve Phase 2. The one thing I will say is that the funding from the state, so that the budget, state budget passed with this funding in it. And we, y'all, we wanted to wait till we actually got approval before I came to y'all. But it wasn't as much as I had thought at first, it was cut in half. So originally, I was wanting to hire two nurses, uh, but I'm not gonna be able to afford that. I'm only gonna be able to afford one nurse. So what I'm asking y'all to do then is to approve the position, Public Health Nurse 3. And, uh, I will, the funding that we're getting from the state will pay for that. And we'll also be able to offset county dollars for some of the communicable disease funds that y'all had approved during the prior budget. And that would be returning to y'all this fiscal year, uh, $34,535.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, we got a motion, we'll get to the question. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Now, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, these jobs have a tendency to be created and then they're gonna be paid for by the state initially. And then the state only funds them long enough. It's a hook, it's a sucker play. And you get the job and then the county has to pick this up and live with it forever. I would propose an amendment to any motion that's made here that those jobs exist in Beaufort County only so long as the state pays for them. And the reason is, we've been surviving very well without them up till now.
Did you make, that is an amendment?
That's an amendment to the motion.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
All right, discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. Those opposed, okay? Uh, yes.
Jim, on the amendment request, you've got down communicable disease revenue of 69,000?
That's what we'll be pulling down from the state for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, that's the state.
That's the state money I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay, we need to vote on the motion with the amendment? Any discussion? All those in favor of the original motion, raise your right hand.
Wait a minute, original motion plus the amendment?
Well, we've already approved the amendment, so it'll automatically be part of it, okay?
I think we all understand that.
Yes. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, we're down to John, uh, the update on the Jail Committee.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to update the entire board on one of the options that has been explored by the committee. The option provides for two choices. One is, uh, in addition to the existing courthouse for 8,300 square feet of addition there, including Sallyport. And you'll hear more about that, both of these in a second. The second goes up two stories and adds another 12,500 square feet of additional space. And note that this is just one of the options that are being explored. I, I think it's important that we provide that information to the public and to the entire board as we go forward. Others include that we would do nothing. And we're, we're working on determining what the cost may be associated with that. And a smaller version of the plans that you're gonna see or that are in your book, which includes really just a Sallyport and then renovations to the interior, interior. And then, of course, the last would be a new facility altogether. So with that, I would like to ask Earl Warren, who is our architect that has been exploring these options for us, to come forward and share that information with you all. Did you have snow in Rocky Mountain?
We did. We're about in three hours. It was real pretty. Been a king your life.
Hello, you wanna walk off the document camera?
I didn't know that would happen.
Now, they got an extra one. I thought maybe y'all could have one for y'all to test. Maybe she's got it. Because, because what I did was put some verbiage that just went with everything that we talked about in the Jail Committee meetings at most points.
If you look at, uh, at the little booklet that I passed out, what I was, have been asked to do is to kind of summarize what the Jail Committee's been doing for the last several months. And I was asked by the Jail Committee to evaluate current conditions and to propose various alternatives and possible changes. And if you look on the first page, under introduction, you can see, you know, we were looking at inadequate, inefficient areas that maybe created safety concerns. And that, that included the intake areas, staff and support areas, daylighting, outdoor recreation, inmate circulation from jail to courtrooms, health clinic and, and an outdated, inefficient heating and air conditioning system. These are in broad scrum, so bear with me. Our initial response to that was to expand into the Register of Deeds and Clerk of Court spaces and then relocate the public elevator, relocate the dormitory and create a 20-bed cell block to access the daylighting, add a Sallyport and then provide an outdoor recreation area. The next colored drawing, which was way early on, is kind of a bubble diagram of, of this, these action areas. You know, where you could conceivably add on, it's, it's really like dominoes. If you do this, then you can do that, if you do that. And, and so from this, and, and I purposely included this because this included comments from, uh, meetings that we had had. Then from the subsequent meetings, it was determined that the, it was obvious that the needs of the current facility far exceeded the available space in the action areas. So an addition out of the back of the existing jail was proposed. And, and we generated a preliminary plan. And that plan is, follows the, the second proposal. And it shows the addition out the back, one-story addition. You've got the elevators being relocated. And so new construction included Sallyport, a health clinic that would more efficiently serve the new needs of the jail, including assessment and isolation, identification of use of public areas, an inmate elevator with access to the holding area adjacent to the courtrooms, an outdoor recreation area. And then the renovation would be a public elevator and ancillary spaces and new heating and air conditioning. So flipping through those two, next two pages, you can see we finally are generating a plan showing an addition out the back that, that shows the Sallyport, intake area, five holding cells, a health clinic. And then on the left-hand side or the west side would be the magistrate's office and a public interface space over here. So kind of, it all kind of is predicated by this eight-foot corridor between the existing building and, and the new building. building and the new building, because that facilitates flow vertically and horizontally throughout the space. And then you've got some, the additional spaces that we were talking about, the dormitory and the cell block, and then staff and support areas, an isolation area for inmates. And then, just because of the economy involved and the potential use of the space, we proposed going up two more floors, two floors over the jail expansion. And, you know, and like Commissioner Rephold said, that's about 12,000, a little more than 12,000 square feet. And, you know, because the register of deeds was being displaced, you know, that would be, you know, we could consider that as a place to expand for the register of deeds. So this kind of summarizes what we've done graphically. And then I was asked, prior to the last meeting, to kind of come up with a, come up with a preliminary, very preliminary budget. And it's broken down in, if you just did a one-story addition, the security vestibule, the new public elevator, the renovation, and what the two-story addition would cost in replacing the heating and air conditioning system. So that totals roughly, whatever, totals $9,966,000. And it, you know, it's an expansive plan that, you know, covers, covers a lot of things that have been deficient in the jail for years and years. You know, it's, I think there's some safety issues that ought to be addressed, and this plan does begin to address some of those safety issues.
Questions of Aaron?
Okay. The, I see the Sallyport down and up. Is that going to be a place for water to collect there? Or is there going to be a way to?
Oh, there'd be a way to get rid of it, yeah.
Also, the outdoor recreation, is that big enough to handle like a sudden evacuation of the jail, say, to smoke or whatever? Would that be where everyone could go? And?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Well, given you a little history of this, the jail committee was formed about two years ago. And at that time, I had a serious objection and did not vote for the formation of the jail committee, because it had all of the fingerprints of an excuse and a way to spend a lot of money and build another jail, which is not needed. So the question that I have in all of this, well, the present project started off, as we've got money from the relief funds from COVID, why not take, stay inside of the footprint of the basement of the jail, and on the west end of the jail, build that out for additional cells? Those first studies came out, that we could have for the, I guess, the 2.9 million, if you want to use what's in this budget, that we could have about 18 new cells, some more isolation cells as part of those, and that we would have a place for, a better place, if you will, for an infirmary. That money, most of that money would have been paid for, if you will, as free money, if there's such a thing, from the federal government. I've come to some of these jail committee meetings, and what I see is, oh, that's a good idea, that's a good idea, let's get this, let's get that, that's a good idea. I am yet to see a justification for doing anything other than staying inside of the footprint of the existing jail and using the space that we already have that is paid for. So my question to the members of the board, not to the architect, but to the people that are on that board, is, what is your justification for this huge expenditure with all of this office space? Tell me why it is actually needed. Now, I don't want to hear your opinion that it's a good thing. That's not a justification. I want to hear a real justification.
In one of our meetings, we invited the people in from the Health Department. That has a contract with the jail for their input as it related to the situation they've gotten a, and in addition to it, considering the problems we've had with COVID, isolation, those kind of things. And so they came in with some recommendation as far as the amount of space that was concerned. And then, we got to talking about, do you do that inside, or you try to do that behind the existing courthouse? So that's when we started looking at what we could move, what we needed to have in a new addition versus trying to do it inside. So I think we were looking at trying to keep the cells within the existing footprint, and everything else would actually be in the new addition.
That's right.
Plus the Sallyport.
That's right, plus the Sallyport.
So that's how, I mean, that's, that's the way I saw it as we began to talk with Aaron, and, you know, with existing problems that we had. And one of the things that we talked about was daylight and no space for physical activity, and this going behind the jail, you came up with a space for us to be able to do that. So I mean, you know, I think that we looked at it, and I, and you correct me if I say this wrong, but one of the comments that you made that really struck was that if we were to do the addition behind the existing courthouse, it probably would solve our problems for the next 40 or 50 years.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I think this cures a lot of eels of the existing facility that was designed in '68 and '69. Nobody anticipated the changes in law enforcement and dealing with prisoners and the responsibilities. And, you know, to be perfectly truthful, there were some decisions made in '68 and '69 that just don't work as well today as this scheme can do. Man, I think it really, I think it solves a lot of eels. And it makes the jail much more safer for the sheriff's deputies and the jailers. It, you know, we're finally able to provide some dressing space, a shower for deputies in the event that they get contaminated. We finally got a little bit of office space for the jail administration. And, you know, and just pure and simply, and this was a bare-bones scheme, but if you took that box and put it down here, that box would take that whole space, that whole side, without any addition of jail cells. So when we realized that we, if this is what we needed, or this is what we'd like to have, and you take that box and you put down there, put it down here in the basement of the existing facility, it ain't going to fit. So then you start compromising, and you start, you know, making decisions that, you know, that's where you start spending money, that is, what is, what's the expression, throwing good money after bad. So this, this is a bare bones, it's not the ideal, but it's, you know, it's a great start for improving this jail.
Let me back up, be sure I understand this correctly. The 18 new cells are going to be built in the basement of the existing courthouse, regardless of which one of these plans we use?
Well, there are really 36.
Where do we get 36? We started off, we could get 18 inside the basement of the courthouse.
No, well.
We could get some shower facilities. We could also get some facilities for examination of prisoners, for help examination, for the people that are providing that. So where did the initial cells come from?
That might have been my time, before my time. But when we looked at this earlier, we were looking at expanding the jail by 16 to 32. And so 18 was never, never really an issue, you know, never a number in my mind. And that, and the 16 kind of came from taking the dormitory from here to there, and then creating, you know, a secure cell block in the rest of the space.
Well, consider this factual information for a minute. 10, 15 years ago, we had over 100 people in the jail, even though it was permitted for '87 or whatever, I think '87. We've gone from 100 people in the jail, now down to like 55 people in the jail. So can anyone produce a study that shows that we're going to have a growth any time in the future of an additional, the need for an additional 36 cells based upon what the history of what the occupation of the jail has been?
Well, it'd be a net add of 20, just a net add of 20.
What do you mean, a net add of 20?
A net add, because I'm taking the dormitory space and moving it over here and just creating 20 new beds in a cell block. So it's a net add of just 20.
So we're, okay, let's back up now. 36 has become 20, so you're saying that we're going to be permitted for 107 beds?
That's the capability right now.
With the $9 million expenditure?
Well, you're not just getting, you're just not getting too many beds.
I just want factual answers. You're carrying a political torch for the committee that you're working for, and that's not your obligation?
Absolutely right. You're exactly right.
Okay, just, the question is a factual question, and that is, we're going to net out 20 more cells if we do the $9 million expansion?
That's right.
Well, the first study showed that we had 18 cells with a $2.5 million expansion staying inside of the footprint that we're in right now. I remember that. I was sitting in a room when all of that was discussed. And what I've seen is this morph and grow into offices for magistrates, offices for this, offices for that, and oh, by the way, we can move part of the sheriff's department over here. None of this stuff is justified in an actual study that says that there is a need. Actually, what we started out trying to do, and what this board started out trying to do, was to provide some additional space, because we had so-called free money. And now we're into a major building project, and we have no studies that show that there is a need for this. We have an opinion from the board that this is needed, but we have no factual information. I mean, I think I needed a gold-plated chair. So why can't I have it?
Well, I think that this revised scheme, or the scheme where we've gone outside, reflects things that needed to be done to the existing facility for 25 years. To have one intake cell for the number of inmates that are handled is, I mean, that's kind of incredible. I mean, it's, it's dangerous. We don't have a psychiatric cell. You know, what we've got is separation between detainees and arrestees in this particular scheme. We've tried to make, we've tried to take safety into consideration every step of the way. So yes, we're only increasing the jail by 20 cells, but good gracious, what we're doing for the, for the staff and the jailers and the people that use that facility is, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that you can put a price on it. It's, we've done so much for it.
Now, you're doing an advocacy presentation, and we don't do that. We deal in factual needs, not just what somebody's opinion is because they want a brass plate on a building that's got their name on it. That's not what this is about. Now, let's go back just a minute. You were talking about the need for more isolation cells, and the need for this psychiatric cell, on and on, and the need for more holding tank space, if you will. That was all included in 18 cells of staying inside the original footprint. So all of this additional spending provides virtually no service other than what somebody thinks that we need. There's not a factual need here. As a matter of fact, there has not been something that I've insisted on for some time, and I'm the only commissioner, I will take credit for it, because I'm the only one who has done it, who has actually reduced the population of the jail, and who works actively to reduce the population of the jail. None of that has been done. It seems as though people, these people are locked into, we're just going to lock more people up. And that's not what law enforcement is about. That's not what reducing crime is about. And so there's nothing to justify these expenditures. There is a justification for going into the existing footprint and making the improvements that you talked about. Everything else is gold-plated. It's what somebody thinks that we need. The taxpayers deserve a functional jail, not a bureaucratic huff jail that provides a lot of office space that the taxpayers are going to have to keep paying for.
Commissioner Repholz?
I think it's important to note that this is just one option. We are going to get to look at all the options, again, going back to doing nothing, to doing just the Sallyport and the expansion underneath of what you're talking about, and then a total new build. That's going to be all laid out for you, for the commissioners to look at, to be able to make some decisions. This, the 9.9 million isn't all the costs even involved in this, this piece of the plan. So that's all got to be laid on top of it, too, so that you'll get a full picture of what all the costs for all the options are. I think we deserve it to the citizens of this county, to show them all the options out there and why we select the one we do, not just because you don't happen to like it.
What the citizens of this county deserve is a factual study that shows the need to spend this money, and we don't have that. And that has not been presented. That has not been considered. How to reduce the jail population has never been seriously studied by the commissioners. So here we are, once again, getting ready to spend a lot of money for something that there's not a need for.
Well, we've asked the, we've asked the National Association to come in and try to finish the work that they had started, and I'm not sure where we're at on that. John, can you answer that?
Yeah, they're not traveling.
They're not traveling?
So they're not coming, yet.
Did you want to say anything?
Well, you know, I think people should always take in consideration officer safety. What Hood is talking about, it's not going to bring about any type of changes for those officers who have to work inside of that detention center. It's just like having a decontamination space. That is vital for these officers who are in this facility. It is time out for us staying in the past and trying to do things the old way. Even if you don't increase the number of cells in that facility, there are certain safety things that need to be done in this facility, and you cannot kick the can and push it down the road, because Hood doesn't think it's worth it. What we got to do? We going to wait until somebody actually gets hurt in that facility? And then woulda, shoulda, coulda? No, I don't think so. It is time for the county of Beaufort to become proactive, progressive, in dealing with every issue inside of this county, and stop trying to listen to old ways of doing things.
Any other? Any other questions of Aaron? If not, I hope you get back before you get snowed.
All right, thank you.
Get back to Rocky Mountain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. John, you want to go to your next item?
Well, as I think we indicated earlier, that there's a two-day session coming up at the end of this month for planning and the start of the budget process. And I think it would be worthwhile taking a minute to just think about what that agenda ought to look like, rather than just sort of showing up. And we could put our things on that agenda. For example, I think it's critical that we move forward with the strategic plan. We ought to talk about that, what that would look like, how we go about that. We need to talk about what is involved with the fund balance and what we're going to do with that. And so I was just, I was just thinking, we ought to collect some ideas about what would go into that session. So I'm open for other items that somebody else would like to see.
Brian usually puts together and Anita the agenda, and I guess the biggest focus is... focus is kind of the beginning of the budget process. Uh, and we've always tried to allow a little bit of time for, you know, some of the other topics, so.
So Mr. Chairman, generally, and I'll be glad to share, Mr. Rebholz, the, the prior planning process that we go through, that agenda. Um, we usually look at the larger departments who have a large budgetary impact. Um, we look for them to come in and make presentations to the board, to help them understand new things that may be coming up in the new fiscal year, any legislative changes that may impact their budgets and what they're responsible for. Um, so there's a large, there's a large piece of that. We ask the school system to come in and talk about what they see on the rise, and we ask the community college to come in and talk about theirs. And that gives the board the opportunity to ask them some questions. We do the same thing, again, with our larger departments. Um, the finance and administration do a big section on numbers, and we will certainly concentrate, as we've talked about over this last year, on fund balance, because we've suggested to you, as you have suggested, that there needs to be a revisit on the fund balance policy. So we'll have significant information on that for you to make some decisions about. Uh, I traded phone calls today, um, with Kevin Leonard, uh, from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, to ask them, could they provide us a resource to come and work with us on strategic planning, to talk about what strategic planning is, how you do it, why you need it, what the process is. Um, my anticipation, this is only a two-day event, um, and my anticipation was that we would give, um, Kevin and his group an hour, hour and a half, no more than two hours, to talk about those things, because this would just be the starting point for them, to help you talk through those things, to understand what strategic planning is, why it is vital to have a strategic plan for an organization to move forward. Um, and then let you talk about, the board talk about, how you then move forward if you wanna move forward, and bringing them back to assist you with those things. So that's generally where, where we set things up. We always have that little extra piece in there, like the chairman said, for extra things that may come up. But we're happy to adjust that agenda as any of the board members wish us to do.
John?
Well, I support all of the things that John Rebholz just mentioned as far as having discussions of those at the meeting, and I would like for him to read that again, and if we need to take a vote on whether it's included in the agenda or not, we need to take a vote.
I think, uh, Brian just indicated that the stuff that I listed is all in the agenda. So we're, I'm good to go with that.
Is, is there an agenda that I don't know about?
No, not, I haven't seen an agenda.
Well, you said the, it's in the agenda, so how is it in the agenda?
He just summarized what we've been doing in the past.
What I summarized was the prior year's agenda that we normally put in place, is the one we, we've historically used when we talk about the community college, the school system, that rough agenda that we always have done, and then with some tweaks in it. What I've heard, like I said, what I anticipate doing is taking last year's agenda, which is generally what we've done, that hits those highlights, and then carving out some time for the association to come in to talk about strategic planning. That's what I meant when I said the agenda.
Well, strategic planning, but we also, you mentioned some things, I think the manager mentioned too, about what we need to be doing with our fund balance, which we have a lot of money there that can be returned to taxpayers, but you mentioned a couple of other things too that I haven't heard mentioned as being in the agenda.
I, I talked about fund balance, uh, billing the strategic plan, what the, what does the board look for, look to accomplish, uh, what will the future be, um, and who can help facilitate it? That's all I had on my list.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item is solid waste, West?
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. A few brief updates before we get into the bulk of the solid waste update for the night. As we talked about the last meeting, uh, the Yatesville improvements are in progress. The survey has been completed, and the engineer is now beginning to work on the design of the improvements to that site. Um, as you may recall, we are beginning with that site because of the safety issue with the steel platform and trying to overcome that, that, um, challenge that we face. Um, after that is completed, uh, the, the surveyor and the engineer will move on to the heavier traffic sites, uh, River Road, Chalkawayne, River Run, um, excuse me, River Road, Chalkawayne and Cherry Run, um, with the design, and then we'll, uh, continue that process until we focus on all the sites. Once the engineer is complete with Yatesville, we will be issuing that for a bid. Our hope is this month, but it depends on that schedule. Um, second thing that, kind of an update from the last meeting, signage is still in process, uh, what I call phase one, our hours of operation signage that goes on the outsides of the sites. We have, uh, received all of the signs after some material delays. Um, we still have four site signs and, um, the landfill signpost on the north side of the river. Um, they're all freestanding signs, so I had to have post holes dug and everything. All the other ones went on the fence and was a very simple installation that I could take care of by myself. Um, once that's complete, we'll, uh, proceed kind of with phase two, finishing up that, which is the interior signage, the acceptable materials, and things like that. We're also waiting on some further, um, revisions to, like our solid waste ordinance before finalizing those, uh, those signs. So that's just a brief update on those two items, any questions on those before we proceed? Okay. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Vance Moore for joining us tonight. Uh, Mr. Moore serves as president of Garrett &amp; Moore Incorporated, an engineering consulting firm established, established in two thousand and six, focusing on solid waste engineering services for the power and waste industries. He has a bachelor's science in civil engineering from North Carolina State University in nineteen eighty-nine, and is a registered professional engineer in North Carolina and South Carolina. Uh, Mr. Moore has over thirty-two years of experience providing solid waste engineering and consulting services, specializing in areas such as solid waste program master planning, feasibility and financial studies, facility siting and analysis, landfill design and permitting, landfill gas and convenience collection center siting and design. He has provided design permitting and construction quality assurance and operations support for more than thirty landfill projects in the Carolinas. Uh, impressive resume. Um, Mr. Moore is here tonight to share some of his analysis of our current solid waste program, and will discuss the idea of the mega sites further. Um, I do, I want to, I do want to note that what he is presenting tonight is not necessarily final recommendations, but a way of providing an update and offering an opportunity to further discuss and provide direction. So I'll, I'll invite Mr. Moore up now.
While he's getting that up, uh, good evening. Again, I'm Vance Moore. Do you have to need a flash? Got that if you need it.
Christina put it up here.
While they're getting that, that going, um, I would say it's a pleasure to be back here. Um, y'all may or may not know I was born and raised in Beaufort County, been gone for a while and have come back. I'm, I'm now living in Beaufort County, have, for about a year, planning to spend my, my, rest of my days here, is my plan. But anyway, I got involved with this, I came down and saw Mr. Alli Good, and Ms. Smith, and Mr. Overman, and just said, I'm, I'm here, do some of this, is there anything, any opportunities? And they took advantage of, of, um, that to say, well, why don't you take a fresh look at this program? And, um, they gave me a lot of information, but I think they were not trying to guide me or push me into any direction. They just said, free rein, let me see what you come up with. And so, um, I sort of came up with, do I just hit the enter?
I'm trying to get in the back, but I'm gonna go back on the screen.
All right. Well, the first thing we're gonna get into, and I'll start reading it, because that's, you'll, you'll have it here, but the purpose of what I did, and, and I'm gonna just read it because I, I define this myself more than the staff, is that I was asked to obtain a thorough understanding of the level of service and associated costs of the various components of the current convenience site program. So basically, I looked at all the budgets and all the hauling data and all this being accumulated by the staff, and I was asked to evaluate adding one or more mega sites, and I have quotes around the term mega site. Yep. To provide all Beaufort County residents unrestricted access for household waste disposal and recycling. What do I hit? Spacebar. So to start this analysis, what you see here is, uh, just a county map showing your current convenience site locations with a circle drawn around them. Circle's really only a visual reference. These happen to be a five-mile radius circles, you've seen very similar, um, um, figures in previous analysis done by others, but it just, it shows you generally the, where the spread of your sites are, and in some cases, the overlap of those sites. Now, um, the purpose of this slide is just to, to outline the materials and, that are collected and at what sites. So the first thing you'll see is that the green checkmarks means that these are the materials that are currently accepted, and the red X's means they are not collected at, at these sites. So, um, and then you see some blue and green highlighted areas in which, um, they're sites that you do not own, that they're either rented or leased. So you have ten sites, five of which are rented or leased. So you own five of the sites. We'll get into a little more of that in a minute. Now, this, this is a lot of numbers, I just put it here, don't expect you to go through and understand all the numbers, I just wanted you to have an appreciation for the, the basis of the analysis. And what this is, is, um, a lot of data that has been accumulated by, um, your, your current contractor and provided, um, Republic Services as far as, uh, how many, how many loads from each site and the resulting weight of those loads. And so what this does is just give you a breakdown of where's material being brought to your sites. And, um, what you'll find if you just look at this is that, um, bulk materials, bulk materials are things that, easy, easy ways to look at that are things like, uh, couches or mattresses, or things that would not go into your compactors. Um, just, they're not designed to accept those types of materials. So you throw bulk, big bulky items, furniture, things like that, into an open-top container. And so what it says is that about forty percent, forty-six percent of all the material collected at these sites is a bulk material, and that sixty percent of all the loads are for bulk material. Now, what does, what does that mean? It means that, um, that, but the majority of your material is being transported uncompacted. So the easy way to understand that is, um, it, it's not taking, it's not taking a lot of weight, you, you're pulling a container, it does not have a lot of weight in it. Uh, it's not, if you were able to compact it or condense that material, you'll obviously have a lot more weight per pull. So the more weight you put in each container, the less number of pulls you'd have to have. And pulls mean, uh, vehicle going, driving to the site, picking it up, driving it back, emptying it wherever it needs to be emptied, and there's time involved and, and cost involved every time one of those containers has to be, um, serviced. Another thing that you'll see is about two-thirds of material collected in the entire system is collected north of the Pemblico River. So roughly a third on the south side, two-thirds on the north side. That's, that's generally what all that, these numbers mean. So some challenges for the current system as I see it, not necessarily has been defined by you or even your staff, um, obviously, the Pemblico River divides the system in half, there's no easy way to go north to south in here, and that's unique in all the counties that I work with, this is a unique situation. Uh, again, we mentioned that only five of your sites are county-owned, and I noticed that there's significant overlap of those circles that I showed you on that figure before, um, between the Yatesville, Five Points, the landfill gate, and the River Road sites along the north side of the river. So there's, there's a concentration of convenience sites in, in an area. Um, the Ransville site, the landfill site are on-grade sites, in other words, all of your sites except those, you drive up, you have a retaining wall that makes it easier to take material out of a vehicle and put it down into the compactor or the open-top container. And that low-density load just equals high transporta, or higher transportation cost. Um, and then, um, the other thing that I noticed, um, just, just by talking, I, I believe there are some potential yard waste compliance issues. And what I mean by that is that, um, um, the facility that you're handling yard waste at the landfill gate probably could stand some upgrades, and we'll get into that, uh, a little bit later. But the challenge of doing my analysis was that the, the data that I just presented to you, um, the costs are presented as a lump sum per month, not by site, not by number of miles, not by number of minutes, none of that was given in this data. So I generally had to, um, to go back, and I'm gonna get into how I evaluated that, but what I'm trying to share with you is the, the way I did the analysis, which certainly could be modified in, in the future. This is what I consider an early step, and as you give me more information and more guidance, perhaps we refine the way this analysis comes together. But of all the challenges that, um, that I presented to you, um, the potential solutions and as presented by staff are mega sites. Well, I've been doing this a long time, and I've never heard the term mega site. So I said, what is a mega site? And so for the purpose of this evaluation, I define this. Not sure it is consistent with what this board would consider a mega site, but that is something that we can work on if I miss the mark. But in my mind, a mega site is a state-of-the-art manned convenience site. Well, certainly your sites are manned, I would argue they're not necessarily state-of-the-art, and I'll get into some of the reasons why or why not. Um, a mega site should be designed to accept all materials that are currently acceptable. So in other words, um, you're not gonna have any limitations if you build a mega site with the, what could be brought to it. Everything should be acceptable at that site. My analysis did not consider any additional materials. I know that there are some people that may say, hey, what about construction and demolition materials? We can certainly discuss that, my analysis did not consider that. I think that that would be going to step five when we really need to be talking about step one, to get into that, but I can certainly foresee where that would be something you'd want to consider. Um, my, a mega site in my mind does not, does not include a scale house, um, or a, or a separate entrance to handle materials. Now, I believe that may or may not contradict what your opinion of a mega site would be, and I can certainly tell you why I believe that you should not put a scale house at a, at, at one of these mega sites. What I do believe is that a mega site, um, should consolidate materials into efficient loads for transport. All I'm saying there is they're gonna be compacted to the, the dense, the most dense practical you can put the material to, for transportation. And this is sort of a new, uh, idea is that, uh, mega site should include a yard waste collection site that is also a processing site. In other words, what I'm recommending is that, uh, perhaps you should consider getting out of the transportation business for yard waste. I'll get into that a little bit more. All of these sites would be paved, and then material that you would pave it And then, the material that you'd pave it with is something that, that gets worked out more in the detail. You know, is it a, is it an asphalt? Is it a concrete? But it, it's more or less a solid surface, probably would not be a gravel, is what I'm getting at. Here's a picture of a site. Don't have to look at all the details. I'm just making a point. This is a Lincoln County site. This was a subject of a, I'm a member of a, a group called SWANA. It's the Solid Waste Association of North America. And this is one of the more recent sites that has been built in the state. And so, what you'll find is that convenience sites, really, we went from open green boxes that were unmanned to manned convenience sites probably close to 30 years ago. And they, you know, they built convenience sites, you know, 30 years ago to the best of their, you know, you know, what they thought was needed at that time. But that thought has evolved. And so, what you'll see here, if you see this site, first, first of all, you'll see turn lanes coming into the site. Effective in and out traffic is, is something that I think is key. Getting in and getting out is what makes this site efficient. And what I have found is that turn lanes are one of the things that older sites do not have, and everybody doing newer sites absolutely includes it. This one is something that I'd consider to be, include probably more than what would be needed in, in Beaufort County as far as this thing has an attendance site right in the middle. That, that attendance site has the ability to monitor, you know, look out and monitor. I can tell you that that is something that not all my clients are a fan of. But in this particular site, that, that has, you know, restroom and washing facilities, has eye wash, things like that that can happen for the attendant. It's certainly better than, you know, having a, one of these mobile porta-johns that we have in a lot of sites across North Carolina. This site has a number of compactors for different materials so that the way these are built, you can access the, the hopper part from three sides. You're not just coming in and dropping it into one side. You've got three sides that people can walk up and, and drop it into. Lot of retaining wall to do that kind of work. It's got, it's got open tops, but down at the bottom center, it's hard to tell in here, but maybe I can point to it right there. That's their yard waste collection area. So, people who are bringing yard waste, drop it directly onto that gravel pad, and it is maintained by, you know, pushing up in the pile till it's time to process it, usually by grinding, and it all takes place right there on the site. There's no transportation. So, what are some of the major assumptions that I had to make to do this evaluation? First of all, the staffing cost. So, according to the budget, I deduced, and I hopefully correctly, that your current staffing cost is about $57,000, 500, $57,500 annually. That's what it's costing per site for you to have people there to run it. And that if we were to build a mega site, the staffing would be consistent with that, that we're going to run it the same number of hours with the same number of staff, and it's going to cost you about the same. So, even though it's a mega site, staffing doesn't go up. Transportation cost, everything, all my analysis was based on 2020 historical data. I had 12 full months. So, what you'll see in Beaufort County over number of years, the amount of material is ticking up every year. And, you know, the COVID thing, that's, that's impacting some of this analysis. But consistently, the amount of material has gone up. Now, the categories of material may have changed. For instance, just due to some decisions about recycling and so forth, you may not be recycling the same amount in 2020 as you did in 2019, but I don't think that the material was going away. It's just changed where it's going. So, what you've got to look at this is amount of material that's being handled. So, 2020 of all the historical data, that's about as high as we've seen. So, what I tried to do, and I'll get into that a little bit, is estimate haul cost if we change the system. How would I know what the impact of hauling would be? How do I take a lump sum price and break it into something that's changing drastically what's being required? The rent and lease cost, if we were to replace one of these sites that's currently leased or rented, is that this analysis says that cost goes away. You shut it down, you don't pay that anymore. Don't know if that's valid. Don't know what kind of contractual obligations you have at these sites. I'm just saying for the purpose of my analysis. And then, the capital cost. If we were to incur capital, I think these are, when I, I think these are conservative terms. I, I assume 20 years at 5% APR. Now, I think as a county government, we could beat the, the rate. The timeframe is debatable. If you're going through like a farmer's home type program, usually they'll let you finance it over the useful life of the facility. But, you know, as you've seen, you've got, you've got sites here that are approaching 30 years. I don't think they would finance it for 30 years. It's been my, it's been my experience that they'll go over the life of the facility to about 20 years max. Now, you may have a whole different experience here with these kind of projects, but for the purpose of my analysis, I thought that this was putting enough of an annual obligation for this analysis. And my analysis assumes that we're, that the new system as I would propose is handling exactly the same amount of material as you did handle. We're not bringing anything new, and we're not getting rid of anything. The same material, same amounts being handled. So, how did I estimate the per-minute hauling cost? So, what you'll see is that that big chart I gave you earlier told you the number of loads that came out of each site. And you can sum it up, and, and you're starting to see that I'm breaking, subcategorizing things that are on the south side of the river and on the north side of the river. Because I really believe there, there is very little cross-pollination going on from north to south. So, I, I believe you need to really look at them as two different areas. And so, all my stuff here is trying to emphasize that. So, what you're seeing is if you added up the historical data, the, the haul tickets that were provided by Republic did give us how many hauls, and they did put some estimates on how long it took for them to go service at each site. So, you'll see the haul minutes differ by site. So, generally what's happening is they're going from their facility, this is near Flanders Filters Road, to each of these sites and back. So, this should be considered a round trip. And the cost, annual cost based on this year's budget, I, I looked at the budget now, I believe it's $770,000 is what is in the budget. And if you just do a divide-by, take that cost for hauling, divide it by the minutes, you get a estimated per-minute hauling cost of $2.63 a minute. So, you use that. The next one was, I was, I was breaking out how much you're paying a year for renting sites. So, this is, this is your current rent cost that you're currently incurring. And I came up with a proposal. I think you need to look at this as kind of a first stab. Certainly did not mean to have anything to have more meaning than to say, generally speaking, I think you, if you want to have a mega site, you probably need to have one on the north side of the river, and you need to have one on the south side of the river. So, let's start on the south side of the river. I, the first, my first indication was if you had a mega site on the south side of the river, why have any other sites? Don't have any other sites. You have one mega site and that's it. But I've spent enough time, and I know how, how long it takes to go between some of these places. And again, it's just one man's opinion that it may be a little long travel time to get to one site regardless of where you put a mega site on the south side of the river. If you just look at it purely geographically, you'd put it kind of close to where the currently the Buck Jones site is, it's sort of in the middle. But it's really not serving a population. You know, we're not looking at how close the population is to that. So, the whole population ends up traveling. You also have a problem about the material, let's just say that is currently going to Chaco Wendy, now would go to the new mega site. You're actually increasing the distance. That material has to be hauled back to Flanders Filters. So, we're going, we're going to address that a little bit. So, my compromise in my mind was that maybe let's put a mega site sort of in between existing Buck Jones and Aurora, just generally here. I'm not, haven't done anything where I'm looking for plots of land or whatever, but I, I believe it needs to be around some road that people could get to and use it. So, this is a generalization of where I think it would go. It can certainly be refined and moved. Do not, do not take this as this is, this is a detailed analysis. North side, on the north side, I did sort of the same thing. And I said, if I did a mega site on the north side, where would I put it? And, you know, which ones would it replace? And if you look at a mega site, if it had all the wells, bells and whistles and so forth, you see a bigger radius around the mega sites. So, it's kind of a visual. The resisting ones show a five-mile radius, the mega site show a 10-mile radius. Everybody could have an opinion on how, what is acceptable. Now, we all know that Beaufort County up in the north side of here, there's a lot of, you know, the warehouser-type property, not necessarily, you know, the population. But if you were to put one generally where I'm showing here, you could, you could feasibly take four existing sites offline. Now, why did I consider more, in my opinion, the sites that are currently served by Pantigo and Ransville? If you were to get rid of those sites, it would, in my opinion, be a bit onerous for those customers to make it all the way to where I put the proposed mega site. You also have to look at some, you've got to kind of look a little deeper, and I'll get into it in a minute, about what is the tonnage being handled and what tonnage is being handled there. So, what I am showing on this slide are the proposed materials. If you were to accept by figure where you put them and how many would be there, you will go from 10 sites to six sites. But what I'm also saying is that we're going to change the way we handle materials in that the new way of thinking is that you do not collect bulk uncompacted materials. I think that you are experimenting with this on some of your sites, for instance, River Road, where you have a device on top that's more of a shredder. You know, there's, there's pre-crushers, there's all kinds of things that you can, that you can put in conjunction with a compactor. They'll allow you to put what is currently bulk material into a compactor situation. And so, what I'm saying is on this is that if you look at the green highlighted but they have an X inside of it, what that, what I'm trying to say there is, for instance, Chaco Wendy, Cherry Run, Pantigo, currently take bulk waste. What I would say is no more bulk waste at those facilities. But we would retrofit their compactors to be able to accept what is currently being taken there and thrown in separate containers to be thrown into one container and handled as compacted. I'm also showing some, some areas that are sort of a yellow highlight box in here, and what I'm drawing attention to, if you were to consider my analysis, I would say stop taking this material altogether at these sites. This currently provided at these sites, stop taking that material at these sites. That's what my hauling analysis and all is based upon that. So, in summary, we're eliminating separate bulk containers from all sites. One thing I will say is that Pantigo and Ransville, I'm not assuming that they're retrofitted with pre-crushers or anything else, just based on the amount of tonnage that, that goes there. What it costs to put this equipment in versus how much transportation cost it's going to save you. Now, we can talk about, do you do things like, there's certain size things that could go into the current compactors. You know, you can put, you can put cages around there that if it don't fit, it doesn't go. If it doesn't go here, you have the option to take those materials to the mega site. I believe that white goods and scrap, for instance, you only take those at the mega sites in Cherry Run.
Vance.
Yes, sir.
We need to take a break. So, I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you stop.
Yes, sir.
We're going to take a break, and because I know there's going to be some questions at the end.
Yes, sir.
But, so.
My long-winded tonight.
Well, I, I would, I would say yes, but it's a very important topic, so.
Yes, sir.
But give us 15 minutes and we'll be right back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Vance, we'll reconvene and let you have the floor.
I understand we need to wrap up, and I'm going to jump ahead, and I've got a slide up right now, and it's the hauling analysis. And what I, here's really the, the main crux of my presentation, is that if you, if you take the recommendations that I've proposed here, you're cutting your hauling minutes by almost a third. And the, the total impact to the budget would be by closing sites, you're reducing operations, you've got fewer sites. Your hauling minute savings, assuming my, that, that holds true per-minute cost, it's about a half million dollars a year savings. Your reduced rent is about $27,000, and the debt service, so you got a little on my analysis, 20 years, 5%, $2 million per site, easy math for each mega site. So, you got $4 million. That comes out to be about $350,000 a year debt service. Add those up, if you were to do this, the impact to your budget's about $400,000 a year. Just talking numbers at this point, but any changes that y'all would like to incorporate would affect that. So, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Vance, we're going to invite you to the planning retreat.
Yes, sir.
Where we can ask questions and have, have more discussion on it. But thank you very much.
Well, travel time will be great for me because usually it's about four hours.
But job well done.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're down to animal control. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Christina, where's Christina?
Right here.
You're going to address the jail repairs.
Yes, sir. That way we can take care of all of the public works issues. There have been repairs made on two of the doors recently in the Beaufort County Detention Center. One was 44B. This is located in A, B, C, D, E block. So, it's a, just a single slider on one isolated cell. The detention officers notified maintenance staff, they went down and took a look at it. The door was still operating, but it was actually a flat bar that had been welded onto the existing door in order to cover an opening so that fingers or other objects couldn't go through. It had, the welds had been broken loose. That flat bar did end up coming completely off of that door, so that cell was not operational, I believe, for a few days. But that bar has now been welded back to that, to the supporting door, so that was taken care of on 12/30. door, so that was taken care of on 12/30. There was also another incident on door 12A, which is the slider that goes into A block. Earlier in December, there was an issue where the door was not operating correctly. Detention officers contacted maintenance, maintenance then went over to the facility when they were able to enter the facility, and at that point in time, the door was functioning and operating correctly. However, they still contacted MTS to get them on a service call to come up. On 12/29, the service technician came in to look at that door. He started disassembling some of the mechanisms or the covering, getting into it. He was not able to find exactly what was causing the issue, so they contacted a secondary technician. He actually left Myrtle Beach as soon as he received the call, drove up, arrived, then resurfaced correct somewhere around 5:00 or 5:30 that day, got in, got the door so that it would function again correctly that evening on a temporary basis, came back in the next morning, because there was welding that would be involved with the other doors as well as that door, got the necessary permits, worked with the detention staff and ordered as far as inmate movement, and they were able to permanently fix that door. The cause of the problem for door 12A is the lock pin in the door was not engaging, so that's why it was not operating either manually or electronic. Speaking with the maintenance supervisor, it was actually the lock pin was located at the very back of the housing unit, so they really did have to take quite a bit apart. He said it was a very, very, very small amount of metal rubbing against metal, that it was just enough to stop it from functioning properly. So they were able to go in and to grind that down and to smooth that out, so hopefully we will not have that problem anymore. But as of all that I'm aware, as far as today, on January 3rd, that all of the doors are functioning properly in the facility. Any other?
I just want to have a question for clarification. So the, the rumors are not true that say that cells are not functioning to the point that staff in the jail is concerned about their safety.
I don't know what I can speak to rumors because I've never heard that rumor, but as far as I'm aware, all of the doors are functioning appropriately and properly. And again, MTS was here, again, there, are under a maintenance contract now. They wanted, while they were here, they wanted to go ahead and look at all of the doors, but that's not a good, good thing to do something that intense without it being scheduled beforehand. So detention staff is working with MTS to schedule, again, their, their quarterly maintenance or the maintenance on the doors.
So those are all the reports that you've had about malfunctioning doors?
Yes, sir. Anytime there's, we receive any report, the maintenance technicians go there and, and work through or contact MTS to come in and to do it, so I'm not aware of that. No, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Carney? I apologize to you.
That's all right. That's all right. Thank you Chairman Waters and, and Commissioners for allowing us to present in front of you before. It's been about six months since we have reported to you some things going on in animal control. If you remember, we had a grant that we had received and some work had got started and we've had some changeover down there. And to give an update to date on just what's taking place in animal control, a quick update is going to be Chief Sawyer. We hired Chief Sawyer in 2019. She came on staff as an animal control officer and she was promoted to chief in July of this year. And I would just like to say her, her.
Last year.
Well, you're right, we've just got a new year. Thank you, sir. 21. With that, though, I would just like to credit that under her leadership and her staff, they have been doing a tremendous job for Beaufort County at our animal control. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Sawyer to give you an update.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a chance to come and speak before you. I just want to give you a brief state of the shelter report. We are fully staffed with full, full-time employees right now. We have a great working relationship within the shelter and we are very passionate about the care of the animals that we are in control of and as far as our community and educating and trying to get out into the public with a, a positive face for the shelter. I would like to take this time to introduce our officers. We have Officer Carmen Torres, who is a field officer, Ashley Jarvis, who is our shelter officer, and Danielle Williams, who also is a field officer. We do have one part-time position that we do hope to be filling soon. We've had three adoption events since September, one at Tractor Supply, which was held in September. We had one in October at the shelter called Pumpkins for Paws, which was a big success. And then we just had one in December called Unleash the Joy, and based on the Christmas, and we had pictures with the Santa Paws and all that kind of stuff. So that was a huge success also. Operationally, things are going well. We were able to send three of our officers to a livestock training and handling at the Blind Spot Sanctuary in September, and two of our officers went, officers went to rabies conference in Wilmington in the end of September. And I hope to have all of our officers eventually certified as animal control officers. We hope to get into our local schools soon because we all believe that educating the children on the basic care of animals and the importance of spay and neutering is crucial. And we have worked with our rescues, the Humane Society, our volunteers and local veterinarians to get out all, as many as possible healthy, adoptable animals. And our adoption rate is now at 74%. We, before Chief Laster passed, the shelter had received the grant as Mr. Hispath had mentioned, and the exercise area has been started and we hope to have it completed within the next couple of weeks. And that's going to be exciting for our animals at the shelter. And I just look forward to what this next year brings. Thank you.
Any, any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the other officers. Jeff?
What's that? We both are. Yeah, that's my middle name.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff and I would like to take a moment just to, to bring you up to speed on a few initiatives that we're working on within emergency services. The first specific to our EMS program, we're currently pursuing a grant through the VINT Community Foundation that would allow us to pilot and implement a community paramedic program. It's, it's a term that may seem new to some, but it, but it's not in concept. A lot of rural areas have had some success with that. Some of our neighboring counties have found some, some success with these programs. And really, the spirit of a community paramedic initiative is prevention versus cure, all right? And it's kind of looking at what are some things that we can do in our community to prevent people from having to utilize our emergency services, EMS, our healthcare providers and things of that nature. And as we look at it specifically through the purview of EMS, we're really looking at the number of patients who routinely and frequently utilize our EMS, our 911 ambulance transports. And as we look through just our data over the last year, we have quickly identified 29 individuals in Beaufort County who have used it at least monthly, some more frequently than monthly. And when we go beyond a monthly basis, we're looking somewhere around 100 people who have used it at least every other month. So those are draws and, and services that, that are, that our EMS units are currently being utilized for that may be prevented through some simple measures that we might be able to undertake from, from a community paramedic program. So one of the, the key things that communities who have implemented this type of system in the past where they have really found benefit is those home visits and particularly follow-ups after discharges. And something as simple as, as making contact with that patient and saying, hey, are you compliant with all your medicines? Do you have all your medicines that you're supposed to be taking? Are you familiar with when you should take them? Are they organized in a manner in which they can routinely take them and stay compliant with those medicines? Simple things like that really go a long ways in preventing that person from having to call 911 again because a medical emergency occurred or having to use other healthcare provisions within our system. This particular grant from, from VINT, we looked at a, as a total implementation cost, a full-time person, all the equipment, all the gear, all the training that would be required to implement this program. Unfortunately, the VINT community grant is an annual piece and what we would, what we would envision on this is continuing, if this is awarded, to continue to seek that funding through VINT in subsequent years. So with that, I'll be happy to take any, any questions you might have. And again, we're just in the application process, this hasn't been awarded. We fully understand that if we are selected to proceed with this grant application, we would bring it back to you for your blessing and consent from there.
Mr. Langley? So if, if you are approved, whoever you hire, they will understand that, that job is pretty much from year to year and there's no guarantees with it.
That the, the funding for that particular year, as we receive it, would be through the VINT grant. And if we do, if we are not awarded that grant, the continuation of that employment would be a Charles discretion as the board.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
John?
I assume that the 117, 120 people are spread out all over the county.
Yes.
So one person's going to make the rounds of the whole county?
Yes, sir. They'll be at a QRV, similar to the QRVs we have right now. They will go out and they will be doing the multiple assessments. And one thing that we can tell, you know, what's causing this person to call that ambulance such frequency, there may be other resources that they can get, either through the health department, through DSS, or through VINT itself, and getting them that correct resource to where they're not continually calling the ambulance for the problems that they're having.
So what does success look like? How do you measure that?
So that, that may depend on, on who we're asking to provide those metrics, okay? So for us, from the purview of EMS, a successful program to us would be have we seen a reduction in the, the repeat users of EMS. So the person who, for example, might have called 911 for an ambulance 30 times this year, were we able to reduce that? Now, there, there are other providers in the healthcare system that have their own metrics. One of the big, the big ones being readmissions at a hospital. So that's one of the grading criteria, I'm sure you're all familiar with, with Medicaid and funding through VINT. That's one of the things that they would look at is how many times have these individuals been readmitted within that 30-day window and have programs been successful to combat that?
But that's sort of a different program, isn't it?
Ah, it's, it's all, it's one in the same, so one program is benefiting multiple, multiple facets of healthcare.
But you, but you're not getting sent out to take care of people that just came out of the hospital necessarily, right?
A community paramedic could be.
Could, could be. That would be sort of a change in the mission then?
Ah, not, not for community paramedicine. It would be a change in what we typically view as the role of a paramedic.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
Well, they, they, he, he's right. The only reason VINT is funding this is VINT gets dinged if they have too many readmissions. So, you know, if they go out and haul people back to the hospital, they've been out such and such a time. It wasn't that many years ago that VINT was docked 2% of, I don't know, $40 million, which is a lot of money. So the, the $170,000 that you're getting in a grant is making money for VINT overall. So they have an advantage in this. I'm not opposed to the program, but as Commissioner Langley said, the only way that I will support this is if VINT continues to fund it because VINT are the people who are making money on this. Our people are there anyway, our costs are the same regardless. So there's not a benefit to the people of Beaufort County to provide this service as a continuing thing. There is a benefit to VINT for us to provide this service for them. So as long as they're willing to pay for it, I don't have a problem with it.
And for us, when we look at, at a community paramedic program, again, we have seen rural counties similar in, in size to us who have, who have experienced those benefits of, of improvement in quality of life, of better access to healthcare because of programs like this. And when we look at this opportunity to apply through VINT, to pilot and give it a try, you know, give it a try here in the county, we certainly want to take advantage of that, particularly if we're able to do it through grant funding. And let's evaluate it and see if we get the same return on investment that others have.
Commissioner Biggs?
I'm, I'm glad to see you doing it. We're a little behind, Jerry and I was talking in hood and I have been to a meeting that they was doing this, and it's very effective. And Commissioner Richardson said that we, our people are in place anyway. That's not true. They, this may not have to be there. Some of these programs tell people, have you taken your insulin today? Have you taken your?
That's right.
Medicine today? It is a cost-saving to the county, and I don't know whether VINT are making money, I don't know whether they are or not, but I know it would be a cost-saving to this county. I'm glad to see this program and hope VINT will fund it annually. And if, and another thing about it, if you get the grant, keep the data and show us the cost that you save in this county. And it might be beneficial for us to keep it going all the time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And it is a different perspective. I had a, I had a gentleman that was teaching me a class years ago that, that told me the best emergency to have was the one that you could prevent. And we see a community paramedic program as, as a potential avenue of preventing a lot of the things that some of our citizens might encounter. And, and we would like to pursue this grant and give that a try.
John?
Is there anything we can do to help you in this process? I mean, is there a letter from this, I mean, is there a letter from this board that would help?
I'm, I'm probably not best to speak to that.
Right now, what we've had to do is put a letter of intent for it and they will select if you're able to apply for the grant. Really, until we get to that point, we don't know what we'll need in order to go forward with this grant. It may even take something like that. Yes, sir.
Well, the penalties that are put on VINT are actually penalties because they've had too many returns. So 2% of 40 million, let's follow the money. 2% of 40 million dollars is $800,000. So they're giving us $170,000. They've got a very good return on the investment. I have no doubt that you will be successful with this because it will lower their return rate to the point that they won't have to pay that, take that ding and everybody is making money with it. I don't want to see the county funding something that really doesn't help the citizens of Beaufort County. It helps VINT. All right. Just for your information, Commissioner Ron Busio and myself went to a meeting, I think it's been five years ago. Five years ago, and this was discussed. And so it's taken us five years to get to this point. And of course, we still don't have it, but I think it's an excellent program and commend you for putting forth the effort to get the grant.
We look forward to hearing something back on it and hopefully we can stand before you again and get your approval to move forward. So, thank you.
You want to move to Jeff to the next item on the application?
Yes, sir.
For the emergency franchise?
MedX had come to us about doing a franchise application and they have actually been contracted with VINT to do transports from the VINT campus here at Beaufort to Greenville. And we had discussed that legally, they can do that without a franchise agreement because now VINT Medical Center, VINT Beaufort Hospital is a campus. But in order to help out, the only way that they can do it and not be franchised is they have to go from VINT Hospital, VINT Beaufort Hospital to VINT Medical Center only. They have, if they come out of VINT Beaufort Hospital or VINT Medical Center and bring someone to their house, that requires a franchise. So they went ahead and went through the franchise process. We reviewed the application, everything was good in the application. It was brought before the Oversight Committee who recommended that they do, that we bring it before y'all to actually okay the application or not, whichever be your.
So this is the first reading and next month's meeting we'll actually take a vote on.
Yes, sir, that is. I have the copy of the franchise application here, if anybody would like to do it.
Any, any Commissioner have a comment or a question?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Going to page the North Carolina Department of Secretary of State, the certificate of existence is dated 2011. That should be updated. You have a letter from a law firm that's dated 2011. You have the Department of Secretary of State dated 2009 for incorporation. Those, all of those things should be updated. You got?
I can request update from them if you'd like, sir.
Well, I mean, you should have already requested it, because that's a part of the application. This is outdated stuff. The other thing, our policy, I don't know if it's been a policy, but always in the past, we've discussed whether or not these ambulance services had an office in Beaufort County. I don't know that that's a big issue with me, but it's a question that needs to be asked. Do all the people that are providing services here now that have, are franchised, do they have some kind of a office in Beaufort County?
We have several that do, and we have three that do not.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it either way. I was just, I was raising the issue because at one time it wasn't...
In talking with Mr. White over it, they are looking at putting one of their units at VINTIT Hospital at Beaufort. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. What type of metrics did you use to decide we needed another transport service?
It was just the application. They bring the application before us. It goes before the Oversight Committee. I have no game either way it goes, no sir.
So, I mean, we hope that everybody that is providing this service has a chance to succeed.
Yes, sir.
I assume.
So Commissioner Reboz, it is all free market.
It's free, okay.
Competition at its best, and the best rise to the top. So we don't put any limits on anybody coming in and saying, we want to provide service. It's up to them to determine if they can make it in this market, or if they can't.
Yeah, we've had, no, we've had several that have come in, didn't see the market for them, and have left.
Well, if they comply with the requirements of our ordinance, we can't refuse them.
Yes.
That's what it comes down to. You want to go to the next item?
That's okay.
Okay.
So the second funding initiative that we're currently pursuing is a grant through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. It's a FEMA-based grant that's offered annually. There's several different application venues in which an agency or department can submit for it. Each individual department can submit, or counties or municipalities can submit for group projects or regional or county projects. And that's what we are pursuing now, in collaboration with the fire chiefs and EMS captains throughout our county. The particular funding that we're requesting is to purchase portable Viper radios for all of our first responder agencies. I know on many occasions, our office and the Sheriff's Office have stood before you and talked about the cost of Viper radios and the changes that are coming with that. And that is what we're hoping to target with this grant. Unfortunately, because of the population of our county, we're maxed at $1 million. So we're really trying to get the best bang for our buck on $1 million. It's a 90-10 matching grant with the grant covering 90%, 10% being a local match, and the individual departments have agreed to match, to cover that 10% out of their existing budget. So we're moving forward with that. Unfortunately, this is a slow grant process. The application window is due in about two weeks, and it will probably be late spring, early summer, before we know whether we made it past the first hurdle. And any awards that typically come from this grant are normally late fall, early winter of the year. So it's probably going to be October, November timeframe of this year, before we know whether or not we have received this grant.
Chris, how expensive is one end of the jaw at that?
So obviously, it depends on the specs of the radio, okay? So the ones that we are, that we've priced a lot of different options, but you're looking somewhere between $6,000 and $9,000 per radio. And that is a portable radio, the lapel mic, a spare battery, and a charger. And all of the radios that we're currently pricing are what's known in the industry as P25 compliant, meaning it is prepared or capable of functioning beyond the next Viper update that's coming in a year or so.
Any other comments?
I don't claim to be an expert on radios, but over the last five or six years, I have sat here through firemen who said they couldn't talk to people on the communication system, deputies that have had problems communicating on the system. We put in the eight transmitters and repeaters, or whatever they are. We've spent all of this money, and all I've heard is Viper radio, Viper radio, Viper radio, appropriate more money, appropriate more money. I thought everybody in the county had a Viper radio, based on what I've heard go on here. So are we having problems with people who can't receive signals now?
So our first responders in Beaufort County are essentially operating on two different radio systems. The majority of law enforcement and all of EMS are currently operating on the Viper system. Our fire departments are operating on the old VHF system, which is what the Commissioners upgraded several years ago. Four, five years ago, we made upgrades to that system. Communications, like many technologies, are evolving very quickly. And in industry conversations, in communications circles, everything is trending toward Viper. Because of its reliability and signal, the number of channels that they can utilize, the number of users they can put on the network, the security of the communications, all of those things that are important in the communications world and the industry are trending toward Viper. VHF is primarily used for notification of first responders, and that's where we're currently using two different radio systems. So if someone called 911 right now and said, I've just been in a vehicle accident, the notification to first responders are paged through the VHF system. And then you have EMS and law enforcement talking on Viper, and fire departments talking on VHF. And that's how we currently operate at the moment. The cost of Viper radios, the things that the radios can do, you know, it's no longer the handheld radios that we were accustomed to. These are essentially computers. They're programmed as such, they function as such, and they're pretty elaborate in their capabilities.
Well, I don't have a problem if you get a grant for doing this, but I just thought this problem has been solved over and over and over again, till I'm somewhat perplexed. I really think what all you guys are doing is working for Motorola, putting money in their pocket, because that's what I think the game is about.
Chris, does each department, fire department, do they have one Viper?
It depends, it depends on the department. Some departments, because of their current operational budgets are better prepared and been able to purchase radios in the past, but we do have several departments that only have one Viper radio right now.
All right. If there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With this being the first working day after the month-end of December, quarter-end, year-end of December, the financial information is not available for tonight, and I was hoping that you would allow me to email that information to you before next Monday, the 10th.
That is fine.
Okay, I do have, I do have some exciting news to share on our debt. You might remember that when we did all the debt refinancing last summer, there was a portion of the school bonds that were taxable, which carried a slightly higher interest rate than the non-taxable bonds did. And key government, the agency or the bank that refinanced those bonds for us, gave us the option. It was called a Cinderella option to exchange those taxable bonds for non-taxable bonds on January the 6th, 2022. I'm happy to announce that we've done that. We signed those documents right before the Christmas holiday. It will take effect on Thursday. And our rate is being reduced from 1.48% to 1.17%. That's going to produce savings of $70,138 over the next seven years. And that's in addition to the 4.3 million that we saved in the summer with the original refinancings.
So you couldn't get zero, but you...
Well, 1.17 is pretty close. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, just one item to ask you about to start with. It was based on a public comment earlier tonight. Historically, what we've done with the Department of Transportation, when there has been a request that has come forward to this board, we have sent a letter to DOT asking them to study the area for a speed limit reduction. Is that an action you would like for us to take, based on the comments that were made tonight in the Sydney area? Would you like for us to ask DOT to send a letter to DOT asking them to study that area for potential...
Slow move. Okay. Just a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the update on the county TV channel and broadband, starting on the broadband piece, still waiting for some additional information from the state on the final great grant piece. That's still being worked through, that, you know, was part of the budget. The Association is working hard to analyze some of those things. We're waiting on hearing that. We did have some conversations with Charter Communications about where they are and what they anticipate on their rollout, based on hard off, and then using some additional great grant funding with partnership from the county, to try to seek additional areas where they are already committed to the federal government to provide service, based on hard off. So we're waiting to hear from them. They laid out some potential options. They were going back and trying to match some addresses over top. We gave them some GIS information to take and lay over top of their maps, to see what kind of numbers we were talking about, number of households specifically, that they felt like they may be able to pick, in addition to the hard off requirements that they already had. So more to come with that. The TV channel update for you, we got the piece of equipment in last week that is going to the head end here, that will allow us to upload stuff and schedule stuff. Altice is actually, today is their holiday for New Year's. So when I followed up with the gentleman today, he said that tomorrow, when all their folks got back in, he said, once their mid-Atlantic team got back in place after the vacation, they would start working on those IP assignments and figure out exactly what they needed to do to get that piece of equipment up. So I don't know what kind of timeframe that's going to take, but we have the piece of equipment. It's been sent to Altice. Suddenly, they have it. It's here in Washington at their head end, and they're in the process of getting that put together. So hopefully, and I don't want to make any promises to you, because we're on their timeframe, maybe next meeting, maybe not. I just don't know yet, until they get into getting it installed. So, but hopefully.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Please make that an agenda item for our workshop, to talk about a position, a possible position, to run this thing, and just this thing in general.
So the next item you have is a request regarding Allied Universal Security. You're aware, they provide courthouse security services to the county. They've had a change in their client manager, John Meadows, and when he went back and reviewed the contract that we have with them, we are due for a new three-year contract. In that new three-year contract, they are proposing that there be some hourly adjustments to the existing staff, some market increases, so that they can continue to find quality folks to fill those positions. You have that information attached, you have their market study, you have the email, you have a copy of the contract. It is roughly an impact of $22,652 annually, based on those additional salary numbers. That's a new three-year contract that would essentially be effective January 1, moving forward, if the board so chose to move forward with that. There are alternatives to this, and we always list you some alternatives. That alternative is, you could just do away with it. The other alternative is, which we've had discussions before, you could do some negotiation with the Sheriff's Office, for them to assume that. I know I've had at least one conversation with one of the Commissioners, and he may, he's probably going to have some comments about it, as to whether that needs to be an armed service, instead of an unarmed service, as it is right now. I reached out to John today, and he very quickly turned me around with some numbers on what that would be, if you made that an armed service, instead of an unarmed service. Pretty significant increase. If that is something that you wanted to consider, the armed piece doesn't necessarily do anything for you, except put aside armed armed. It doesn't give them arrest power, it doesn't give them anything additional. And if you were to, if you believe that there ought to be an increase in security, my suggestion to you would be that we look at negotiating with the Sheriff's Office on essentially assuming those duties at the start of the budget year. There may be some, there is opportunity to do that in a manner, that if you wanted to increase the level of security there, and that is strictly a policy decision by the board, if you wanted to do that, I think it makes more sense to do it with the Sheriff's Office on in-house basis than it is to do it outside. But that's not what this is about, this is simply an alternative for you. It is a policy decision for you to decide what you want to do. Based on this, our recommendation gives you that this is a new three-year contract, based on those new numbers, with an increase of $22,652 on an annual basis. Do you have to answer any questions, or...
Commissioner Reboz?
The other day, I had the opportunity to go to the courthouse, and I got to tell you, that that's not, there isn't any security there. I walked in, and they asked me if I was an attorney. I did have a sport coat on. I said, no, I'm a county commissioner. And the guy said, well, just go right on through. So I went through the metal detector, and of course, it went off, because I had phone on, and I had a knife in my pocket and all that. He said, don't worry about it, just come on. They've had incidences there, where the security has no, the only thing they do is report. They call 911, and hopefully, somebody responds. And usually, it's going to be the city of Washington that responds. I think we need to take a look at providing better security for those people. A courthouse is a high-risk area. There's lots of tension going on there. There's people that don't want to be there, obviously, and are forced to be there for one reason or another. And it's just, there's lots of emotions involved, and we need to ensure that those judges and those people that work in that courthouse are protected. And even when they call 911, sometimes people don't even, they don't get a response, so...
Well...
I don't have the answer. I'm just saying, we need to take a better look at it.
Commissioner Richardson?
Actually, before we went to this system, the Sheriff had a very good system for providing security, which was on the second floor with metal detectors and the use of bailiffs. And it worked, it was very effective. And I voted against doing this to begin with. I'm still against doing it. I think we're already paying the Sheriff to do it, but it's not getting done. It's a waste of money in the long run. First floor doesn't need anything like the kind of protection that the second floor does.
Brian, my question is, can we extend this contract until like July the 1st, on a month to month, or all the way to July the 1st, to give us a chance to discuss it during the budget workshop?
I think you can certainly, I mean, we're on essentially a month-to-month with them now, because we don't have a, we're under a continuing month-to-month contract with them. So you could certainly do that. I can certainly say to John, the board wants to have some additional discussions about what this is and how it's done. And I'm sure they'll be happy to do that. I mean, what they've said is, we'll modify our arrangement. If you want, if you want the supervisor to be armed, and other folks not to be armed, we can do that. We can do whatever. I mean, they're there to provide a service. So I think that what we can do is say that to them, but obviously, we don't need to drag it out too much longer. I mean...
I would like to see us explore having the Sheriff's Office provide the security. So, any other comments, or anybody wanting to make a motion on the...
On what?
Or just...
My comment?
Okay.
Thing about it is, Commissioner Richardson was basically correct. But Reboz was just the foreoffice he could be. On the second floor, everybody up there got guns. On the first floor, nobody had them. You got the bailiffs up there, and the Highway Patrol up there, but you don't have a bailiff in the rest of the deeds office. You don't have a bailiff in the office where he used to work at. So when we start to put these things out there, we need to put it out there as factual, and see what happens. And I don't mind the Sheriff... And I don't mind the sheriff. I mean, you're talking to the sheriff, but the question that I have, do you have any control? I mean, those people down there now that don't show up, send them down the door. But the sheriff told you, he run his office and I want him to run it. So that's all I have to say is we need to be very careful in what we do.
Let me just add to that. What the sheriff was, I agree with you. The, what the sheriff had that was effective was in screening people going into the courtrooms, and that was very effective. So, yeah, we need to talk about all this stuff.
So I guess the question for me, as I talk to John tomorrow, is am I hearing that the board does want some type of, I mean, the first question is, do you want to continue this service somehow, somewhat? Do you want security to continue at the courthouse? If you do, then we explore the other opportunities. If you don't, then we just say, thank you. Come July 1, we're out of the business.
Let me ask you a question.
Have you put, have we put the numbers, if we go back with the sheriff, have you put the numbers together, what cost would be versus what we have now?
I can give you some rough numbers.
Okay.
And just based on what John sent me today. So currently, if you want, what he said was if you want armed service, if you want to increase that to an armed service, then the number is $267,155 a year. Okay? If you want to continue with what you have and give that bump in salary to make sure that we're able to continue to have folks, then it's $171,891 per year, which is the increase of $22,652 from what we're currently paying. So if you say, we like what we got, we want to stay with what we got, and we're going to increase it by $22,000 and make sure Allied Security can hire good folks. If that's what you say is your baseline, then you could add $48,000 to it, to that number, which would be a total of 22 plus 50, so $72,000. And you could have the sheriff's office provide four deputies. He's already got a chief or a sergeant over there, so you don't need a supervisor. They would provide four deputies to do the exact, to do that, and they would use existing vehicles so you wouldn't have to throw in additional vehicles because that's where, that kind of got us stumbled last time when we had these conversations. Now, the conversation I had with Chief Deputy Rose today was about those. And I said, is there a possibility to do that and to find those vehicles? And he said, yes. But you got to make sure that we get back on the rotation that we originally had for the last couple of years on replacement of vehicles, which was 10. And that's where we got to, and I would agree with that. That's where, the number of vehicles they had, we had gotten to 10. We agreed that was a good number to stay at so that we would constantly be replacing those vehicles and not get them too far down. We've gotten away from that. And for them to be able to take four vehicles that were going to roll off and now put four folks in on them, there's also the opportunity to use those folks for transports after hours to do other things that we don't get any additional benefit from through the existing service. So that's about 72 gets you that service. If you said, I want the armed service from Allied, right? I want them to be armed, and that's going to cost you $267,155. Well, then you could put four deputies in place, the exact same scenario I just said, and you could save $50,000. Because it would be more to pay Allied to have armed folks there. And that's because they got to have a supervisor there. You don't have to have a supervisor if you put four deputies there. They already have a supervisor in the building. So those are your options.
Are you adding the car cost in there?
I am not adding any car cost because the chief deputy said, I can absorb those with vehicles that we have that we would roll off, just so long as, we would hang on to additional vehicles that we would roll off, just as long as we can get into the replacement schedule back to 10. We can replace those vehicles, then we would be able to absorb that. And I think he's back there. John, if I said something wrong?
If we just delay this right now till we have more discussion on it, what do we need to do to maintain what we've got? Do we have to give them a raise now?
I don't think we do. I think they're asking for that. I think, I think we've got to be, I think, that's why I said, I think you need, this board needs to make some decisions fairly quickly so that we don't string them out. I mean, it's not fair to the vendor that we have to say, we're going to play you along.
Right.
The board needs to have some conversation and decide, what is it you want, and then explore those options, but move fairly quickly.
Can do it at retreat?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think the retreat's the perfect excuse for this. And to say, you know, we're going to kick the can down the road a little bit. We're going to look at it. But I want some assurances that we're not going to get a letter that's going to kick all these people out like the schools got from the sheriff. So that's what I'd like to have.
So there is an opportunity, obviously. It's pretty clear, and we've had this conversation with the powers that be legally. You have the ability to reduce the sheriff's office budget during the middle of the year if you want to. There's no restriction that says you can't do that. So there's obviously the ability to put an agreement together with the sheriff to say, if we fund you four positions for courthouse security, you'll provide those for courthouse security. If you say, I'm not going to do that next year and I'm going to put them on the road, then you take that money out of his budget. I mean, it's an honest conversation to say, that's a service we feel we need. We're willing to pay for that service. And if you don't provide it, then we're going to withdraw it. You know, I don't see how anybody has an issue either way.
Why is it four positions and not three?
It would be two at each door. That's currently the way it's set up. So they're manning the metal detector and then someone also to assist. So that's the way that's set up. Because it's two and two, and then one supervisor for Allied right now.
Brian, do you need anything else from us?
I think I've got direction. What I'll let John know is that there's some additional conversations the board needs to have about this regarding armed service and any additional thing, and we'll get back to him as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the North Carolina Department of Justice response to Commissioner Deathridge. I'll ask that you turn to page 274, and I'll read one paragraph out of there. It says, "We have reviewed your email, NCGS 14-234 and NCGS 143-129.8. The small county exemption does not apply to the contracts that are bid under Article 8 of Chapter 143 of the General Statutes. See NCGS 14-234D2. The contract that is the subject of your request was publicly bid using the RFP process under Article 8 of Chapter 143 of the General Statutes, specifically NCGS 143-129-8. As such, a small county exception did not apply."
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to read the next paragraph and make a statement. The next paragraph right underneath that says, "Please note that this is not an opinion of the AG's office, formal or otherwise. It has not been reviewed and approved in accordance with the procedures for issuing a formal Attorney General's opinion." And I looked up that chapter, that section that they talked about, that they claim applies, that you guys claim applies. That section has to do with the building of buildings. It does not have to do with the providing of services. So what you guys are doing, I don't understand why this is even on the agenda for tonight, but what you guys are doing is smearing a commissioner to make yourselves look good. But actually, what you did was you cost the county about $30,000 in additional expense, just so that you think you're going to make Commissioner Deathridge look bad. But I got news for you. You're the guys that look bad because you're proffering false information.
It was discussed, and it was some conversation, and I just think it needs to be in the public record what the response was. That's why it's on the agenda.
Well, as well as public record, to be clear, this is not official Attorney General, this is not official Attorney General's opinion. And the article that they referred to, that you guys keep referring to, I've read it, most of it. It's a long article. It has to do with the construction of buildings and stadiums and other things. It does not have to do with the providing of services, and it does not apply.
We're down to items for discussion and decision. Hood, you've got seven items. You want to, you want to start? The sheriff's office staffing report.
Yeah, we need to, we need to clear up some things.
That's on page 275.
Got you, got you. Look, I would ask this, this is Chief Deputy, he's not here. Oh, there he is. How could I miss him? Your staffing in the department, again, going back to the rumor mill, which I understand is a rumor mill, but still people come around and they say things and they call me and they say things. One question I have, is your jail administrator still employed? Did he or she resign?
Laquisha Latham, who has been our jail administrator since Cat Brian retired, she has turned in her resignation. She's got some personal things that are going on, some positive, some negative. She did turn in her resignation. She is going to stay on in a part-time role to help us transition into where we're going to be going with the new leadership of the jail. Over the last couple of weeks, Captain Jeremy Hewitt has been assigned to be our jail administrator, temporary, permanent, as temporary, permanent as things go about the sheriff's office. He's been, he's worked at the sheriff's office for right at 17 years. He and I have worked together closely since we both became sergeants on patrol. So I have the utmost respect for his abilities as far as leadership and organization. And I think that after a brief period of a little bit of tension, probably some more turnover when it comes to personnel, I think that we're going to actually see through his leadership that we will be able to advance beyond where we've been over the last couple of years. It's just going to take a little bit of time. While I've got the floor on that, is that we do have a good number of openings. I think I'd mentioned in the last couple of meetings that Pitt County is really, that they've recruited hard out of our detention center. They've hired two from us. We've also had a couple more leave. And of 20 FTEs that we have for the jail, we actually have eight openings right now. So we were running at two or three. We've had some folks leave. We're pretty much doing a full court press. On one, we're going to move folks temporarily, as temporarily as we can, folks that have had jail experience, folks that have been DAC certified, that are in different roles at the office to help out with some of the staffing. And we're also trying to recruit as heavily as we can. And I think like a lot of other industries, businesses, whether it's private or whether it's government, you know, COVID has had its effects. You know, the rate that we hire at is right on average for comparing to like Washington County or Pamlico County. Craven County pays more at the onset. Pitt County pays more. So we're running into those challenges, but I think that we're going to be fine. I am not. I worry about everything and I'm concerned about everything, but I'm not worried about us having to shut the doors at the jail for lack of staffing. We'll get through this time, and I think we're going to be better after it.
Okay. Would you care to comment on the rumor that the issues in the jail have to go to safety?
Well, sure. I think any, anything that doesn't work exactly how it's supposed to, when it's supposed to, at a time that it's supposed to, it is an emergency, and that is a problem. You know, if you've got something going, if you've got a block that has six people in it, and four of those six are fighting, and you can't get in with the resources that you need to, or get out with the resources that you need to, at that time, that is just about as big as an emergency as you can have. So I think if, you know, and not, not making light of situations, you know, that those are the talks that you'll get from officers, and they are valid, I mean, 100% valid. And I will also say that in my time that I've been the last seven years and three years before that, when I was captain of patrol, I mean, I've made the call several times, if we can't get the door open, that we will destroy the building to get people in or out of. You know, we've had, we've had the fire department with the jaws of life, you know, that they were ready to put metal to steel and open up doors to get into and out of where we need to. And that's always going to be an option that we're going to have if we're talking about the differences, people getting hurt and people not getting hurt. So I have not specifically heard a concern from the jailers about the door systems or being a safety issue, except for when they're trying to get into a door because something's going on and it doesn't work right then. That is a problem and a concern, but we get those fixed.
Okay. That takes care of me with that particular issue. I'll move on unless another commissioner has a question on this subject. Anyone have a question?
You said that Pitt County is recruiting your people. Well, I mean, how are you going to stop that? I mean, you said that there's money issues. A few years ago, there was money issues and we made that adjustment and it quietened down, and now it's right back. Are they actually calling over here, contacting your people?
Yes. Yes. We had, we've had a couple of people that have left. They've moved to Pitt County. You know, then they applied and got hired on, you know, stuff that makes sense. And then it becomes like it would anywhere else. You've got friends that are, you know, at different places, and then they're making phone calls to people that they've known forever and say, hey, we've got openings over here. Want you to look into coming.
So Pitt County got eight of our jail?
No, no, no. No, I didn't, didn't mention that. I said, we had eight openings, and I know of two that have directly gone from the jail.
Okay.
To over there. But I also know that they are, I mean, they're recruiting, just like, you know, I'm not, I'm not.
We do it. I know.
We do. We do. I mean, we do the same thing. It's just I'm trying to give information to really what's leading to where we are.
But what I'm getting back at is when we was, we had this issue before, I don't know whether he was Chief Deputy or not, and we adjusted jailer salaries. Do you remember that? And that was to keep them here, and it quietened down, and now it's back up.
Correct.
And that tells me there's something else besides salary. I mean, there's got to be something else besides salary. All of a sudden it jumps up. I mean, is it morale? Is it something we've done?
Morale, morale definitely has a play, you know, and I think that I will say that that money upfront is a talking point, probably more upfront than anything else. That might get the hook in. But then after that, really after about six months or so, everybody gets used to what they have and, you know, the bills are the bills and things like that. And then that's where you start getting into, you know, the quality of life issues, the facility issues, things like that. You know, and I'll say, you know, I grew up in Greenville. I grew up in Pitt County. I moved to Beaufort County when I got hired on by the sheriff's office. Still have a lot of friends that live and work in Greenville and Pitt County. And it is a different level of work. If you've got four people that are running a shift for 12 hours, then every task, everything that goes on is going to be taken care of by those four people, whether it's rounds, whether it's meals, whether it's fights, whether it's, you know, whatever the tasks that you have for that whole day are going to be covered by the four that you have covering that. Where it is different, if you have Pitt County, that is a much larger facility, has a lot more inmates and has a lot more resources than you, you know, you go into work at Pitt County and you may be assigned, you're doing intake today, which means that you're going to be at this spot, and that's going to be your role that day. If they have three arrestees, you do three. If they have 20, you might do 20. You know, but there's more specialization when it comes to the job, if you have more resources and more people, as opposed to if you have less. So it is more of a grind for our folks than it would be for an agency that is larger.
Randy?
Is Pitt County offering bonuses that you would know of?
Not that I've heard as far as any sign-on bonuses, but I mean, where they can go is, I mean, they're, you know, I try to keep up. I try to, you know, see the information when it comes to what they have, what they spend, the resources that they have, and they can throw more money. Initially, they also have more people. They also have more supervisors. So if you look at an agency and you get hired on and say, all right, well, there's 18 supervisors, that's 18 chances that I could have to advance over the next couple of years, where at our office, we may have four opportunities. You know, so all of those things come into play. I haven't heard anything really, you know, amazing that comes out of the recruiting. And I will say that Pitt County has had openings for years. I mean, they may have 20 or 30 openings, but they also have 150 people that are working at the jail so they can, where we might have eight openings and it be really crushing to us. They can have 30 openings and with their numbers, it's probably okay.
The movement certainly is west because the schools are having problems. The movement certainly is west because the schools are having problems, losing people to Pitt County. And I imagine Pitt County's at losing people to Wake County.
I think that's sort of the nature of that beast.
And it is money with as far as teachers and others that I'm seeing.
Okay. I think you've pretty much answered the disposal of automobiles. It looks like you've sold a lot of them. So that takes care of my question about the disposal of the surplus vehicles that we had.
We, if, just as a, I guess, a reminder, you know, we had, going into this budget year, there was some cuts that were made in the overall number of employees that we had. So there was going to be surplus that we were going to need to do because we need to keep our fleet to the point where I don't want to have cars that we can't take care of. So there was a number of high mileage cars of whatever division that had them that we need to get rid of that we did. But we also were in a situation where through the negotiations in the budget, that there was going to be an addition of four deputies back. So we needed to keep cars available for those deputies. And then to remind even further, because of the, I guess, COVID supply issues and things like that, vehicles that we ordered actually two years ago now, we are just now getting to the point that we have them and are getting them outfitted and that was four vehicles. So not the 10, but four vehicles. And going into next year, that'll put it where those four vehicles are only vehicles that we've added to the fleet in three calendar years. So we are, right now, we're in a position where we have surplus some. We have what we need for right now. And that was in the comments that I made to the manager there was that we are okay numbers-wise for what we're looking. But anything that we would look at in the future, we would need to make sure that there's an understanding that we have that sort of constant ebb and flow so we can replace the high mile vehicles before they get dangerous.
To touch on that, that you gave us those vehicles back to make your budget where you could get some radios or something. We didn't cut your vehicles. Put it in there too. We didn't cut your vehicles. Put it there where you got the money for the vehicles, but you used it other, am I correct?
Yes, yes. So, and if I said cut, yes, that was this year. Now, the year before, we went from being appropriated funds for 10 vehicles to write out four vehicles. That was the year before. So, but the two years prior to that, we were at that level where it was twice that amount of funds of not $200,000, but $400,000. And that was with the understanding that that would be sort of that constant number better for budgeting, that there'd be less years where we can go from two to three. And then we come back to you and go, well, now we need 20. So that is, and please, correct me if I am wrong on that, that was my recollection of the conversations that we've had throughout the years on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that you got the money. You said you could do with the cars, but you still got the money. And if I'm, if members serve the well, I'm getting kind of old now, but I think you bought radios or you done something. I don't remember.
Well, that's this year. That's this budget year.
For the 10 cars?
That, no, it was not 10. It was 200,000, which would cover about half of that. Sure. Well, that was previous to the cut getting down to four.
I got you.
Now, in this budget year, the funds were right out of about $200,000. There was a conversation at the Budget Workshop where it was actually brought forth. And the flat out, the feeling that I got was that if something didn't happen, that 200,000 was going to be cut dead. So I made the request at that particular point in time, since we were in a year that it is difficult to buy and purchase vehicles because of supply issues, that instead of using those funds on vehicles or absorbing a cut of $200,000, that maybe we can tackle what we really needed to work on at that particular point in time, which would have been radios. So instead of piecemealing four or five radios with what we had, using money that I thought was going to be cut to something that we, that we need a little bit more. And, but once again, if somebody remembers that differently than I do.
You're right. But you want to go to the ankle bracelet?
The ankle bracelet program was started about, I don't know, 15 or 16 years ago, the purpose of which was to reduce the population of the jail under certain circumstances. We've had, and I stopped getting reports on this, and I didn't worry about it, about three or four years ago. We'd get a report every month, the number of people. We had 15 and 16 people on ankle bracelets, maybe down to 10 or 11 sometimes. And the way that system works is they're monitored. They have to be certain places under the program. And, but I asked for the ankle bracelet report again, beginning about three or four months ago. And I was surprised to see that we've only had four people on ankle bracelet release for the last three or four months. This particular report does not give what they are charged with. The first reports that I got showed what they were charged with. And I would like for you, when you give us this report every month, to go back and tell us what they are charged with. Because the people that were on ankle bracelet release, some of them were charged with murder. There was some serious, and all of them were serious offenses. I think we need to, and I realize that the ankle bracelet, the release is controlled by the judges. I don't have a problem with that. The clerk was good enough to provide, signed by Judge Sarmons, pretrial release with electronic monitoring procedure. And this is the procedure for getting someone on pretrial release. I would like to see us take a look at how we can get more people on pretrial release. Because that saves the county a lot of money. It lightens the load in the jail. It makes it easier on our officers that we're already shorthanded on. And these people are out worrying their mother and their wife. And I can't think of a better place to be if you've got an ankle bracelet and you've got to stay in a certain place, other than to have to put up with your wife and your mother all day. Because they're going to want you out of there. So that's very justifiable punishment, whether you're guilty or not. Is there anything we can do that will enhance this program, Charlie, to get more people on ankle bracelet release? And I'm thinking in this case, I saw something in here, and you certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that you had to make bail in order to be on ankle, well, no, you didn't have to make bail in order to be on ankle bracelet release. I had something, saw something to do with bail. But if you have people that are charged with serious crimes on ankle bracelet release, why couldn't you take some of these people that are given a problem over with probation and parole, put them on ankle bracelets and let them sit at home with their relatives for a while? I know that they complain that it's a problem to get them into jail. Sometimes they're only in there for a few days. Sometimes they're in there for a while. But I can't see the county feeding and clothing these people and providing medical services for them when we don't have to. What can we do to get more people on ankle bracelet release?
You said a lot. I mean, that was a lot to really digest. There are several things. I really can't speak to probation's role. They have their own ankle bracelet monitoring. I really don't know the criteria that goes in there. But that could be something that, of course, we can try to have conversations with. Really, the biggest drivers that I see and have seen over the last couple of years that I've, that since I've started paying attention more and more is a lot of the numbers that you'll see are going to be reflective of the total population in the jail. You know, so the numbers, I mean, of course, I think if the numbers of our total population goes up, then we'll have more people that are going to be eligible for the pretrial release program on the local level. One of the things that you hit on about the bail, of course, if you make bail, then you don't need to be in jail. You know, however, one of the issues that we do run into is that we actually may have a candidate for pretrial release based off of the charges that we have on them, but they may be charged in three or four other counties and have bonds from those other counties. And even then, we try to, I mean, you know, we try to play the system when it comes to the bond game, because usually Beaufort County bonds are going to be lower than any other county's bonds because of just how things have been for years. So if they do have a bond in Craven and Pitt and us, then ours is usually the lower. And we try to make them be housed in another county that has higher bonds. So that is probably the biggest issue that goes along with the bond itself. With us, it is, there's conversations that we have on every inmate that we have in the jail that looks like they're going to stay there for an extended period of time. If somebody gets in there on the weekend, about Monday or Tuesday, we're going to look at the bond situation, look at what they're charged with. And even if we don't get an application from the Defense Counsel or Public Defender's Office, we're already engaging with the inmate, trying to see what the deal is with it. And we'll do the paperwork and get it before the judge, even if it's not being done by the Defense Counsel or the DA. There are some, and you've hit on it, and in years past, when it comes to strategies and techniques. So you get an inmate that's charged with a crime, that the total sentence that they can be convicted with and charged with is 30 days. Sometimes the defense is going to let them sit in jail for 30 days and then use that as leverage to get a deal from the prosecution, saying they've already done the time that you can get them, let's do something with that. You know, so even if you do have some candidates that could be ready for pretrial release, that sometimes the Defense Counsel or the DA isn't going to go along with that. But, you know, when I was on the road, when I was working and trying to arrest as many people as I could, I wanted the population in jail to be as high as I could. Now that I'm in the role that I understand that once we have them, we have them until we don't, I would like to see as few people in our jail as possible. So any ideas that can come from the board, anybody that could eliminate the need to have somebody incarcerated for a long period of time in Beaufort County, I'm all for it.
Well, I think we should talk more about this because there is a history of having a lot more people on pretrial release. And I think that maybe we should talk more about this, maybe have it back on the agenda next meeting, if you will put some thought into it and see if you guys can come up with some way that the commissioners might be able to help to get more people out on pretrial release.
Now, in my dealings with Judge Parker and Judge Sarmons, they have been more than willing to help, you know, in situations when it comes to our facility and the population that we have. So I'm sure that anything that we can come up with, then there'll be a solid conversation with our judges because they've been very helpful.
Well, one of the questions is, are you sure that you're doing an intense job of screening and presenting these people to judges to get them on pretrial release? Of course, I get the jail report. I look at the jail report every month. I will agree, a lot of those people, I don't want them out. So it's finding candidates that qualify. The problem over at probation seems to me is one way to lower the number of people that are in jail by having them out on ankle bracelet. Might help detention. So maybe we, maybe we talk to them a little bit.
And probation has been wonderful over the last, really when COVID hit, March 2020. Really with the situation that we've had, probation has done a wonderful job of making sure that they are not overburdening us with numbers. But there's plenty of things and tools that they have in their belt that are being used in other parts of the state that they can't use in Beaufort County because of the population, the dips and dunks like they like to call them. They're really not really doing that very much here. Weekenders, they are keeping that to a minimum. You know, and that could be something that in years past, you know, we might have, you know, 15 to 25 come in on Friday and then have to stay in jail and then they leave on Monday. But they're really limiting that to really next to nothing. So I think, you know, between the partners that we have, I think everybody is willing to work at whatever we can do to make things better.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
And I do have, I guess, one more comment that was brought to my attention, that one of the reports, the actual criminal and civil numbers was not in your packet. That was also a request that you've recently made and we were actually getting that to you pretty much live. You know, on this one, the newest report, just because of how your monthly meeting worked out in the holidays and stuff, would have been really tough to get. So what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, is that moving next month, it may be about a month old, but you'll get those numbers and it won't be as much of an emergency every end of the month for us to try to get those numbers to you, if that would be.
We have the November number.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't bother me if.
So if we can do one month where it's a little bit more of a lag, you'll still get the numbers, but it'll be maybe a little bit older than two or three days old.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
ARP funding discussions.
Well, my purpose, the only purpose in having this in here is to keep it in front of the board in case there are changes made in these ARP funds, improving our public library system and the status of mega sites with ARP funds. And that's all I want to say on that, unless somebody wants to say something.
Go ahead and move to the video.
Well, I'm going to make this in a form of a motion because I'm concerned that these meetings, and I know people say, nobody watches them anyway. And the reason they don't watch them is it's such a poor quality and it's so late coming out in the month that producing a bad product has done a great job of driving the public away. That's how it works. So I move that the manager be required to have the meeting, all filmed meetings, whether it's this Police Committee, Jail Committee, or whoever, online within seven days of the meeting.
I'll second that, but I want to ask, you mean online or?
Not online.
On the public channel?
On the public channel. I misspoke. I'm sorry.
And I will say this, I don't know if the public channel even has the December meeting up yet. I didn't, I haven't seen it.
I think they do because it wasn't up as of the 20th of this month, but I checked it last night and it was up, although it was frozen when I saw it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That's a good motion, but the problem is that we're having to deal with people that aren't county employees. And I could see where they would mess this up. And I think once we get this, what I call County Channel 5 up and running, then this motion is absolutely appropriate and should be made then. So I would hold off on that right now because you're dealing with people from, well, suddenly. And they could drop the ball. They did with me many times.
Would you be willing to just amend the motion so that once the new equipment is installed, that they be posted within seven days?
Absolutely.
Well, we can vote on that now.
Yes, just once the, once the.
I will amend my second to include your amendment.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Those opposed? All right. You want to go to the County Litigation Insurance Pool Discussion?
Yes, I'll call on the County Attorney to present us with this information as he was requested, as reflected in the minutes from last month.
It's laying right there in front of you. Did you read it?
I'd like for the public to know about it. I don't want it to be a secret like you guys are trying to keep things.
You got your answer right there.
You're not going to give the report, is that what you're saying? But let me remind you.
I have no report to give you. That's the report.
Let me remind you that you're appointed by this board and you report to this board and you work for this board. So if you are refusing to perform a request that you were asked at last month's meeting without an objection from this board to present to us. So if you're refusing to present the information, so say.
I've got the information that was presented.
We all do.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make the report for you, Mr. Attorney. The information that's presented by the attorney, some of it is as much as three and four months old that has never been made, this board has never been made aware of was going on. The settlements in the case of Franks and the settlements in the case of Shepherd was ongoing. There are emails in here. I'll make a preliminary report. I'll make a more detailed report next meeting because it is not incumbent upon me to make this report for the County Attorney. It's up to him to make this report. One of the questions I'll ask you that's unanswered in here is, who is the insurance pool that's paying this more than $650,000 for the sheriff's sins?
Who is the pool?
Yeah.
That's also in your report.
Well, who is the pool? You don't know?
It's a bunch of county commissioners. It's a whole group of people.
The money doesn't come out of the pockets of the county commissioners that serve on that board. Who pays the money?
Yeah, to the board, Beaufort County is engaged with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Risk Pool. They provide our property and liability insurance and they provide our workers' compensation insurance. So the risk pools, they're two different pools. There's the liability and property. And then there's the workers' compensation pool. So those are two different pools. They are managed by the association with boards of directors that are appointed. Those are typically county commissioners throughout the state of Montana. And occasionally, there's also, I think a county manager or two that serves on. And occasionally, there's also, I think, a county manager or two that serves on those, but they are governed by those boards. And they are just like any other insurance company that we would deal with. They pay the claims, and they have the ability to settle those claims. Once we engage them, once we pay the premium and engage them as an insurance carrier, we essentially, they'll listen to us sometimes, but they ultimately have the right to settle a claim, whether we want them to settle it or not.
That's the way all insurance companies work.
Yes, sir.
The, but the people, the pool itself is what entity?
The pool itself is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Risk Management Pool, whether it is the liability and property, or whether it is the workers' compensation.
That is composed of all of the counties that pay into pay insurance premiums.
That's correct. And it's just counties. It's nobody else but counties because it's not an open pool. It's just counties. And I'm not sure how many they have in that pool. It's probably 60, 70. I don't know the exact numbers, but it's a significant amount of counties in North Carolina.
So really, they dipped into their savings account, their insurance surplus funds, and wrote the check to settle these?
Well, I think they're just like any other insurance company. They have a they have a pot of money that they set aside, and then they buy reinsurance so that if something exceeds what they figure is a certain amount, then the reinsurance kicks it, and the reinsurance takes care of it. So it's just like any other, it's just like any other insurance company. If we were to go out and the county would say, we don't want to be with the association. We want to be with Allstate. We want to be with Farmers Home, somebody like that. Same kind of thing. The advantage for us as a county in dealing with the association pools is that they understand county business, and they understand the liabilities that you face that a lot of private insurance companies would go, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll cover you. And then when it happens, they go, oh, we don't cover that kind of stuff because they don't have any clue as to what counties do.
Yeah, I understand. Now, I asked to determine whether or not there was some kind of co-insurance. Was all of the money, 100% of it, paid by the pool? Or does the sheriff have another liability policy?
No, sir. The sheriff doesn't have another liability policy. We have a deductible that we pay based on instances that occur. Like if it's a vehicle damage, it's a vehicle damage, I think it's $1,000. If it's a liability or a professional issue, I think it's $5,000. And then if there is a, if there's a property, a significant property damage, like a building, lightning, those kind of things, I think it's $10,000. So we've got a schedule of deductibles, just like everybody who has insurance has a scheduled deductible. So we pay our deductible, and then they they take care of the rest of it.
Okay, now, the fact that some of these some of these settlements are made and sealed by judges so that the public can't find out what's going on, we have no way of determining what the payouts were made by that particular pool over like the last couple of years. Or do I have that report here?
I'm not I'm not aware of how that how that works. I mean, I think the county attorney can probably speak to you. My understanding is the reason they seal those is they don't want people knowing it because then that drives the price up for everybody, right? Because if I know that I got $200,000 because, you know, the attorneys, the attorneys go on TV and say, you know, I got my client $200,000 because they injured their arm. Well, that's what the policy limits were, you know. But I think the reason they seal them is that they don't want folks to know what they settled for because then it drives up, it drives up the price for everybody. Then everybody goes, well, you settled for that. You're going to at least settle that much for me.
Well, from the standpoint of the public, I can understand private a lot better than I can public. But I can't understand judges sealing public lawsuits on the settlements of these things because all it does, that does is protect public officials more than it does the public insofar as insurance rates goes. And I really have a problem about sealing any policy claiming that it will make rates go up. I would think, on the other hand, I could equally argue that it will make rates go down because people will become aware of what some of these unjust settlements are. I've sat on a couple of things when I was on the hospital board, and there were some really unjust settlements. But the insurance companies wanted to get out of it because they knew that the lawyers were going to hang to them. So they made an economic settlement based upon, we can pay more money for this and not have to go to court. Whereas if we go to court, we're going to pay a lot of money, and we still don't know what we're going to get.
Sure. And that's generally the way a lot of those decisions are made. But also, to reiterate, and I've heard our insurance carriers say that several times, we don't cover illegal activities. You do something illegal, insurance doesn't cover it. So that kicks it out right start with. If you do something illegal, then insurance is not going to cover it.
Okay, you want to go to your next one?
Well, I'll have some more questions, and I'll have more to report on the information that the county attorney refuses to report. I don't know what to be in his bond it is, but he is not acting professionally as our attorney. Going to which one?
Your very last one, page 284.
Well, I'm going back to the amicus briefs. It's my opinion that we need to take more of a look at the filing of amicus briefs in certain of these federal lawsuits as they affect Beaufort County. For instance, we did about eight or nine years ago. We had 400 Hispanic students in the Snowden School who required special attention from language. They cannot speak English. These were immigrants that came into the United States, most of them illegal. And the present system that we know of, 2 million people are crossing the border illegally into the United States, led in by the Biden administration. And there are some experts that say there's as much as four or five million. They are certainly capable of repopulating entire counties, changing the landscape. And as Commissioner DeFric said at the last meeting, the Browning of America.
That was a few minutes before.
Was it? Okay. It can change the culture of the United States. It can change the culture that we are accustomed to. It can change the way that we live. That's why I think it is important that Beaufort County become involved by sending some of these friend of the court briefs in some of these lawsuits. Perhaps if the county sets the precedent of doing some of these, other counties will catch on and do the same thing. If you take the number of people, 34, 3500 counties and around numbers in the United States, and 10 is 35,000, 100 is 350,000. So look at the number of people that if you divide it up, the illegals that are coming into the United States equally, you're back to a severe impact on the Beaufort County school system. And the way this is done, with our system of zero record keeping in the United States, this will fall on you without you even knowing about it. And it increases your taxes. The people of Beaufort County will be paying for this. And I'll be back at the next meeting with some more specifics requesting that we file. The county attorney has refused, unless he's willing to step forward tonight, to participate in determining what the cost is or determining the mechanism of how we go about filing these briefs. So is that still the case, Mr. Attorney?
It's still the case, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
This is not county business.
This is county business.
It's national business.
No, it's not national business. When you have, when you are flooded, when the county is flooded with illegal immigrants, and it increases Joe Smith's tax bill in Beaufort County, that concerns every citizen in Beaufort County. 400 students at JS Snowden 10 years ago cost us $12,000 times 400, almost $6 million in tax money. So for anybody to argue that this does not affect our citizens and somehow it's a federal issue, it's not. It's a Beaufort County issue. And as soon as it becomes more of a local issue, this problem will go away. You can't keep running from it. I'll be back next month.
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Excuse me, let me respond to that. That the subject is amicus brief. It's not what happened 10 years ago. That's what I'm talking about.
HUD is exactly right about the cost to the county. Right now, we pay a certain amount at the county level and then a certain amount at the state level, and the federal government picks up about 7, 8% when it comes to school children. The amount we pay at the county level was roughly about 35%. The state plays the larger part, but we all pay state taxes as well. I estimated probably 15 to 18 years ago that the illegals were costing us about $2.5 million a year just for educating. We also have to pay for Medicare, excuse me, Medicaid, and some other programs that I can't come up with. There are programs that they're sliding in on in the DSS. And it may be, it seems small, but it mounts up. Now, HUD was right. It's about 2.2 million people that they know that have come across the border with the open border policy that is the Biden-Harris plan. And it is to change the way, the voting in America, to change the demographics drastically for all. So our nation is not recognizable years from now. What we're doing as a nation to say, we are not a nation of laws. We are a nation of politics only. And that's why I've been on this subject for decades. We're losing our nation to people from other areas and to politicians that don't care and will not follow the rule of law. If you guys are okay with that, if you're all okay with saying to Joe Smith or whatever his name was, your taxes went up, that's just the way it is. Well, I can tell you, you can put a pen to it, and you can sharpen a pencil, and you can figure out what that cost is. And it's hitting you at every level. And when it gets to the point that brilliant people like Joe Biden become the president each and every time, you cannot get somebody to come up and clean up after these idiots, then you lose your nation. Now, he won't be, he won't be here more than about three more years, if he makes it that long. But somebody's got to clean up after him. And after you. No, it's not about me. Right now, right now, we probably, he has imported about 800,000, I estimate mathematically, 800,000 cases of COVID across that border. And yet he makes school children wear masks. Does that make sense? No. People are losing their jobs because of vaccine mandates. Yet he still imports 800,000 cases of COVID across that border. That's why we have a problem now. More people had died in 2021 than died in 2020. And yet, the democratic socialist propagandists accused Trump of being a murderer of each and every person that died in 2020. Have you heard anything about Joe Biden in that respect? No. What's that got to do with Beaufort County? It has everything to do with Beaufort County.
Gentlemen, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Happy New Year.